Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee Hearing. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the Seven Council District. Today, the committee will hear Council Resolution 25003R, informational hearing, hearing permit reforms. For this hearing, I understand that there is a lot of information from our witnesses. There will be also a lot of questions from members. Also, in order to facilitate the hearing, I would like to ask for everyone to testify, would be able to be recognized by the chair before they respond to a question or remark or testify to the committee. So if I do not point to you, you cannot talk, just to make it very clear and plain. And if you do, please come to the podium so that we know who you are and it makes it easier for Charm City Television as well. Present in attendance is Council President Z. Cohen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also in attendance is Vice Chair of the Committee Odette Ramos from the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And also in attendance is Councilman Zach Blanchard of the Eleventh District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also in attendance is Councilman Jermaine Jones of the Twelfth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also, members of the Council President's Office is here, also members of the Mayor's Office is here. And with that being said, let's begin. Resolution 25003R, informational hearing permit reforms for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Office of the City Administrator, the Baltimore City Fire Department, and the Office of the Fire Marshal, and other relevant parties to provide information on reform to the Department of Housing and Community Development's permit process. This bill was introduced on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Councilmember Ramos. Comments from the Chair, President, and sponsor will be held over until after public comment. With that being said, public comment will last no longer than three minutes. Each person. With the... Sorry. Thank you, Tony. First up is Helma Munson.
Good evening. My name is Helma Munson, and I own a row home in Locust Point that needs a small subroof replacement due to water coming into my house. Before I began the permitting process, I had difficulty finding a licensed contractor. Contractors have told me they simply don't work in Baltimore City anymore without providing an explanation. Once I finally found a licensed roofer willing to do the job, the contract that I signed stated that I was responsible as the homeowner for getting the permit. From the start, applying for a permit was confusing and difficult. I called, I looked at the website. I was able to create an account for myself to get the ball rolling, but I was confused about the process, and I called the permit office to get help with the application, but I couldn't get through to anyone. I emailed the permit office and received an auto reply stating that I would hear back in three business days, but no one followed up with me. The contractor told me that it could take months to get a permit, but I needed the permit before they could replace the roof. After a week of no updates, after I had submitted the application online, and I was unable to get through to anyone, I reached out to Councilmember Blanchard's office for help. They were able to help me get in touch directly with Commissioner Kennedy. Only after that did I get a call from the permit office, and the permit was approved soon after. In total, it took about two weeks, but I truly don't know if it would have happened at all without outside intervention. Meanwhile, my home continues to suffer water damage, and I now have to wait until the contractor can fit me back into their schedule. This experience has raised bigger concerns for me as a homeowner in Baltimore City. We should not have to have political connections or reach out to an elected official for help getting a simple permit to fix a leaky roof. I ask the city to consider exempting urgent, non-structural repairs from permitting altogether, or there should be a simple expedited process that provides same-day or next-day approvals. There was not even a box on the application for me to check to indicate that my repair project was urgent. The permit system should work for everyone, even those who are unfamiliar with the process, such as myself. A homeowner should not need an advocate to get a city permit so that urgent home repairs can move forward. The current system creates safety risks by delaying essential repairs, and it seems to discourage reputable contractors from working in the city at all. Fixing the permit system is not just about efficiency, it is also about public safety and ensuring that Baltimore City residents can take care of their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Next, we'll have Doug Schmidt.
Chairman Torrance and members of the committee, my name is Doug Schmidt, Principal at Workshop Development, a Baltimore-based real estate development firm committed to rebuilding our city. Thank you for focusing on reforming Baltimore's permitting system. While government reform may not be glamorous, no ribbon cuttings or kissing babies, it's essential to creating a vibrant economy that can bring opportunities to all Baltimoreans. The Mayor's FAST proposal, along with efforts from the Council President, Council members, and this committee are a good start, but I urge you to approach this challenge with ambition, urgency, and innovation. Arizona State's Kari School of Business ranked Baltimore sixty-second out of eighty-three North American cities for ease in business in zoning and permitting. Developers and capital sources are aware of our business climate and are choosing cities where they can work efficiently and find financial success. With our declining murder rate, now is the time to remove government barriers that make Baltimore a hard place for businesses to grow. We have the potential to capture our share of new jobs, business, and investment. The time, effort, and cost of doing business with the city government is within your control, and it must be improved. Virtually every city is now prioritizing cutting red tape. For example, San Francisco, in June, implemented a shot clock time limit for reviews and eliminated nonessential requirements and fees, including one similar to our minor privilege permit. Newark and Chicago allow self-certification, issuing permits without any city reviews, design professionals carry the liability, and audits ensure accountability. L.A., Austin, and Honolulu are piloting AI-based plan review systems to speed up approvals and reduce staff workloads. DHCD's goal to digitize permitting was laudable, but automating the existing arcane process was a missed opportunity. Adding more steps and requirements was a mistake. We need a modern streamlined system, even if that means starting from scratch. A respected voice in our community recently asked, "What if Baltimore had the reputation of being the easiest place to build?" That's a bold vision and one worth pursuing. Let's do what it takes to make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to recognize we've been joined by Councilman Mark Parker of the First District. Next, we'll have Ms. Seltzer.
This is a plausible Underground Railroad safe house. This has a raising permit by a big developer in Frederick, Maryland, who wants to demolish a hundred ninety years of a war of eighteen-twelve veteran Thomas Hooks, eighteen-thirty-five tavern house. Nowhere in any of his ads did any of this have in letting people know what they're buying. And the auction, he got the auction without any clearance that the way to the... There was no disclosure that anyone having anything to do with this property was bought. So this auction in December was built for him. Thomas Hook was a Methodist.
Ms. Seltzer, you have to be, I just want to make sure your comments are germane to the permit.
I'm getting there.
I just want to make sure that it's germane to the permit.
So I'm just clarifying that this is a federal house. It's clear with the rounded windows with smaller chimneys pushed to the side, and it was a radiant hall, radiant heat floor.
Ms. Seltzer, it has to be germane to the permitting system.
I need to explain that this is for the record. This is the deed. It says eighteen-thirty-five.
Yes, ma'am, but I just want to make sure your comments are germane to the permit.
That the raising permit is erroneous.
I understand your passion.
I need to clarify that I got a message, I got an email from Richard Rudisil, Rudisil, and he wants to have a raising permit on WebEx. And I wrote back, I said, "I cannot show documentation through a WebEx." And my understanding is there has to be a thirty-day permit, you have to let the public know? And I've been talking for eight months to Commissioner Kennedy, and she takes absolutely no responsibility for every step all the way, but this is her department. And Richard Rudisil said, "DCHD," or DCHD, whatever. You must save this so that we can find out for sure. This is ninety-eight percent sure, an Underground Railroad safe house. This is the only one I can find in this whole country because it's wood. It is the rarest of rare buildings. You don't find this, even in Salem. And they have many preserved wood houses, like the Hocus Pocus House, but they don't have this. And this is a boon to Baltimore. This is film, television, very selective tourism, but basically it's a really great space for people from Kansas, from Florida. These are people that were coming through, going to York, abolitionist galore, that were focused just on getting people straight up to York, and this was on the way. You cannot deny that Thomas B. Hooks eighteen-thirty-five tavern house didn't have a place in history. He's a warrior, and this house deserves to be saved, just like Walmart.
Ms. Seltzer, so, Ms. Seltzer.
He's saving again!
Ms. Seltzer, I'm going to have Jason, can you raise your hand in the back? Jason Wright? Jason Wright is with DCHD. He can provide you with the documentation related to that permitting process. So if you see the gentleman with his hand raised in the back left or the back right as you are, I would go and talk to him so he can provide you with the detailed information. I just want to make sure, because when we made the request a few weeks ago at the hearing...
The chat denied, and...
Yes, ma'am, I understand, but I just want to make sure that you are provided with a copy of the permits as well as a review from the CHAP Commission, so that you understand that there was proper vetting of that permit.
You're not going to provide...
I understand, ma'am, but Jason will provide you more information.
This can't be done, why are you doing this?
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Next, we'll have Denise Davis. One second, Ms. Davis. You gotta push the button, the red button.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, good to see you. My name is Denise Davis. I am a resident of the city and I'm a member of the Executive Committee of the Greater Baltimore Group. So I, as a city resident, I want to thank you all for working so hard to make the system work and also thank the staff for trying to get this right. And I know it's a hard project, so I just want to start out thanking you with that since I have done similar projects and I know it's tough, so please keep at it and get it right. I'm here to ask the City Council to investigate making our new permitting system part of the state-funded effort to greatly facilitate permit review for the installation of solar panels and energy storage for our residents. The permitting reform is an opportunity to address more than one pressing problem and with a, you know, very similar amount of energy. And the good news is, is that there's a grant for this, so I'll tell you a little more about that in a second. But recently, many of your constituents have asked you to address the steep costs of energy that they're struggling to afford. One incredibly effective way that we can help our constituents is to take full advantage of state energy initiatives that offer to help them reduce those rising costs. The state's taken some bold initiatives. One is community solar. The other is the Empower Program. They offer especially high benefits to lower-income residents, so it's very well-suited to our communities. One of those initiatives, another of those initiatives, is the Maryland Energy Administration grant to cover the costs of integrating this very innovative, and one of the gentlemen over there mentioned innovate, please, very innovated system for solar panels and storage installation. It's, they know that it's so fast that it actually attracts people to both take on the projects and people who are willing to put them in to take this approach to putting them in. It creates a sort of a fast lane or a TSA pre-lane for these kinds of projects, very innovative stuff. Today, I ask that you take a step towards learning more about this. If you haven't heard about it already, please ask the permitting leadership to tell you about their investigation about obtaining the MEA grant. I think they've already done some work in this area. I had a chance to talk with Jason a little bit earlier. And ask them to keep you posted. That grant has just reopened for grant applications. Let's investigate while the grant money is still available and embrace this innovative method of speeding solar permit review, improving access to solar energy, and lowering the cost for residents and installers in our city. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions about any of these programs, community solar, Empower programs, or this one, I'm happy to answer them. My contact information is in the application, I think, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Can I read some papers for you all? Over there, okay, great.
Next, we'll have Rich Montoni.
Is it red on or is it off?
Red is on.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rich Montoni. I am a sole proprietor and small developer, born and raised in Baltimore, and currently working on a project in Federal Hill at One East Montgomery Street, formerly the Scarborough Fair Bed and Breakfast. I know everyone's familiar with the issues with the permitting system right now, so I'm not going to go into that, but we'll talk a little bit how it's affected me and other developers in the area. So I purchased One East Montgomery Street in July of twenty twenty-four. It's an historic building located in the corner of Montgomery Street and Charles. Beautiful building, ultimately it was three addresses that were combined into one, making the bed and breakfast in nineteen seventy. It's a full renovation. Previous developer had given up on it due to many issues in regards to the community support and the permitting system as well. Ultimately, when I acquired it, spent a lot of time building relationships with the community to get them back on board, which ultimately, they actually showed up to the zoning hearing in our favor in January to, probably very rare, they supported us for more units than Baltimore City was initially offering, going from five units to seven. We went through the CHAP approval as well, which is we've received a full authorization to proceed from CHAP on every standpoint for both the city, state, and federal level as well. But ultimately, getting back down to here, the permits, we submitted for the permit back in February of this current year, after going through both the zoning process and CHAP approval. Ultimately, it sat for three months now without even being looked at. It was finally looked at three months later, but here we are coming up into August, and we are still not approved. I think as a small developer and a sole proprietor, I often get the misconception that a lot of these buildings are being renovated by larger corporations. That is certainly not the case. I think most of what's happening around Baltimore City is being done by small developers like myself and also other smaller companies trying to, you know, grow their business and ultimately live the American dream. Although I really don't want to go into numbers here, but you can do the math, holding costs in a building like that is roughly ten thousand dollars a month. So we're twelve months in now. I'm going back to the banks, having to renegotiate my terms with the banks because, quite frankly, the money I've set aside for renovations has been eaten up. I've started reaching out to the neighbors who I have good relationships with to let them know that ultimately I'm considering having to possibly give up on the project. Something I've become very passionate about, being an historic building, I look very forward to it. So that's certainly, ultimately that is being passed down and the day to the renters probably one day, hopefully, and then ultimately causing more issues with inflation and housing costs that we already see are possible. Also additionally, here I am as a owning other rental properties in the area, having to sell multiple properties to continue funding this project. These properties I'm selling are ultimately rented by other voucher participants, not to say that I can tear up their lease, but I don't know how the other future developers are going to treat that. So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hopefully being able to continue supporting the community and developing it if we can get past this project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montoni. I'm looking for Alex Simoni, Merit Properties.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's hearing. We sincerely appreciate Baltimore City's initiative in organizing this forum to engage with developers and contractors who support the city's diverse business community. Providing a platform to share challenges, successes, and suggestions for the permitting and inspection process is a valuable step towards improvement. Merit Companies, through Merit Properties, Merit Construction Services, and Merit Clubs serves Baltimore by leasing commercial space, constructing buildings, and interior office spaces, and operating high-quality fitness facilities. These operations require us to interact regularly with the city's permitting and inspection systems, giving us a deep and practical understanding of how the current process functions. Over the past two years, standard interior construction building permits submitted by Merit have taken an average of a hundred and four working days from submittal to issuance. Use-in-occupancy permits have averaged sixty-two days from submittal to approval. These extended and unpredictable timelines can significantly disrupt construction schedules, delay business operations, and complicate tenant relocations. Additionally, the current requirement to complete all building inspections and then separately apply for a use-in-occupancy permit, only to undergo many of the same inspections again, adds unnecessary duplication. In surrounding jurisdictions, use-in-occupancy is granted upon completion of building inspections without a separate application, resulting in a more efficient process. One key factor contributing to these delays is the availability of inspections, particularly from the Office of the Fire Marshal. We understand that this office is currently understaffed, often resulting in inspection delays of several weeks. Increasing staffing across inspection departments and the permitting office could greatly improve turnaround times. We would also like to highlight a significant positive experience that demonstrates the system's potential. Following a tornado that struck Baltimore on May sixteenth and damaged Merit Clubs in Canton, Mayor Scott and Deputy Mayor Justin Williams committed to helping us reopen as quickly as possible. Although we were still required to complete all necessary drawings, permits, and inspections, we received these permits in just nine working days, a testament to what is possible with adequate coordination and prioritization. In closing, the expedited process we experienced in Canton should serve as a benchmark for permit timelines citywide. A more predictable and efficient permitting system would benefit not only developers and contractors, but also countless businesses such as restaurants, retailers, office users, warehouse users, and more that rely on a timely project completion. Thank you again for this opportunity, and we look forward to continued collaboration with the city to streamline and enhance the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for Mr. Andrew Lansky.
Thank you. First of all, thanks to everyone here, you know, the great work you guys have been doing, the declining crime, the murder rate, investments in youth, committing resources to removing blight around the city has been great. I think it's great for everyone. I think I speak for everyone here when I say that, you know, we're excited to, you know, embark in the future. I own a property at thirty-five-hundred O'Donnell Street. I've worked with Mr. Cohen several times, appreciate his support. Mr. Parker, thank you for your support as well. We started this process in October, where we had our tenant that owned the bar moved out on us. We got everything situated with the liquor board. Again, thanks to the support of the councilman there. You know, from there, we started the process in October. We met with someone from the city, got a pre-consultation hearing. We thought it was going to be pretty simple, wouldn't need a whole lot of plans and permits, but that wasn't the case. We filed suit, got everything submitted in February. It's taken almost six months at this point to get a permit, a simple mechanical permit and electrical permit that required all these, you know, various sign-offs. The permit didn't move for three to four months, and we've had to, you know, contact other people, have people go down to the permit office daily, and frankly, we're just kind of tapped out on resources. And now this is going to bleed into potential issues with the Baltimore City Liquor Board, where this restaurant has not opened. And we're going to have to go for, to them for an extension, and as I understand it, there really isn't a clear designation as to how long they can give you, but this is well-documented. You know, we received the okay from the liquor board on the twelfth of February. We filed the permit, went through everything. Some of the other delays include six weeks for an electrical sign-off. We're adding three electrical outlets, and I'm not going to, you know, talk about building and different things like that, but these are simply to plug in some fans and some lights. I mean, these aren't like major, high-load things. This is something I could, I would do in my own house if I, you know, felt like it. You know, in addition, it's taken another two weeks since all these sign-offs have been done. We still don't have a payment link, the permits. I guess I'm here to, you know, voice my grievances, express my support for everyone here, but at the same time, like, what can we do to get this done? Because it's affecting, I have a tenant that's been, you know, at this point, on the line for almost a year without anywhere to go. You know, he doesn't want to open the restaurant without a kitchen. The community wants a nice place to go where they can eat food and not just be a corner bar where people are going to stumble out. They want to sit there, have a nice burger, have a nice meal. I've owned the place for almost ten years, I've done a lot of cleanup with it. We removed the other bar out of there with, I think, you know, Mr. Cohen, you remember what was there previously? You know, we took out the, whatever you want to call those machines, the poker machines and whatever, and we cleaned it up and made it what the neighborhood would want, right? Sold it to this other gentleman, he was there for a while, COVID happened. You know, we've done everything by the book, we're not a problem with the neighbors, good relationships. This is a simple mechanical building permit with two electrical outlets, and it's still not issued today. And, you know, I fear that my investment I've worked hard for is now going to be at risk because of the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to online public comment. If you are online, please use the raise hand function to be recognized for public comment. We will now take a thirty-second pause to see if you will raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I will defer to the Council President for opening statements, and then Councilmember Ramos, and then I'll offer an opening statement before agency testimony.
Thank you, Chairman Torrance, Vice Chair Ramos, and to all my colleagues who have joined us today, as well as the folks from the agencies, and thank you for opening with public testimony. Appreciated hearing from folks who are utilizing our permit system. It helps us to get stronger when we hear from the end user, so thank you all for coming out and testifying. This is a critical moment for our city. As has been mentioned, homicides are down to historic lows. We have a governor, a mayor, a city council, and communities who are collectively committing unprecedented attention and resources to tackling blight and addressing vacancies. This must be a moment when we turn the corner on inclusive economic growth and make Baltimore a great city in which to start a business or buy a first home. But we cannot achieve the economic renaissance that our city deserves if we cannot make the nuts and bolts of our permitting system work for rather than against our residents. In fact, this is a fundamental question that so many Americans are wrestling with in cities and towns across the country. Can we make government work? Can we get the basics right? And this is one that is squarely within our control. We cannot blame the federal government or anyone else. We have to get this right. I know many dedicated city employees are doing all they can, and I want to appreciate a lot of energy and overtime that has gone into trying to fix this system. But whether due to technology or process failures or our permitting system is not working for, as we heard today, many of our developers, small businesses, nonprofits, contractors, and homeowners. As I said during the budget hearings, the system simply feels broken. Nearly two years ago, Baltimore hired the company Acella to build our new permitting system. By all accounts, this is a reputable... By all accounts, this is a reputable entity that is used widely across Maryland and in many jurisdictions across the country. Based on the invoices we've received, we have already paid this company at least $2.5 million to create our new permitting system. For example, this is an invoice from earlier this year totaling more than half a million dollars. But after spending millions of dollars, we have a system that takes months to issue even the simplest permit and that frustrates users with its demand for relevant information while providing no message board, as we heard today, to help our users. In fact, many residents report that after, that only after contacting their council member, as we heard from Ms. Munson and a few other folks, or the mayor's office directly, did they see any movement in their applications. The key question is, given that we have spent millions of dollars on this system and given that this technology appears to work in other jurisdictions, why isn't it working here? Is there something wrong with the technology the company produced for Baltimore? Is there, or is there something wrong with the processes we employ in our permitting system that technology alone simply cannot fix? Also note that in late 2023, even as DHCD was in the process of hiring Acella to build what is supposed to be our new and improved construction permitting system, the Department of Transportation was actually beginning the process of cutting ties with Acella and hiring a different technology to manage their right-of-way permitting system. This gives the troubling appearance of the right and the left hands not communicating with each other. We need a clear and specific plan with timelines and milestones to fix our permitting system and to achieve the improvements in efficiency and timing that were promised, and we need to ensure that the plan is fully implemented as quickly as possible. I do want to thank Deputy Mayor Williams, Shemiah Kearney, and the many folks, D'Artagnan from the Office of Innovation, who have taken on this very large task, but now is the time to turn the corner. I do believe we need a commission or some form of public and council participation to provide recurring oversight at a granular level and ensure that everyone is rowing in one direction, communicating effectively, and achieving the results our homeowners, businesses, and developers so urgently need. The one last point before passing it back to the chair is I do want to thank the Fire Department, who I see is here, I believe had in the, in this city's budget, we worked together to make sure they do have some more reviewers and inspectors within the Fire Marshal's office. Thank you for doing that, as well as starting to look at what third-party review could look like as well. So, we have seen some improvements. Now is the time to build the system that we all deserve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now turn it over to the vice chair of committee and the bill sponsor, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I want to thank everybody who took the time to be here after hours today as well for this important hearing, as the president said, and as you'll hear from other colleagues, and what I've said also before. This is really critical that we get right. Several years ago, when I first became councilperson, I've been in the council for five years almost now, we continued to get complaints about the permit office. And I remember asking very clearly in English for an in-out, up-down, forwards-backwards, right-and-left assessment of what's happening in the permit office at the time and what changes need to be made. So, fast forward a couple of years, the department comes to us in a hearing and says we need another year to reform the permit office. Okay? Sounds good. We'll give you another year. And that was for training and technical assistance, but that's actually not what happened. And there has been, because of those extra two years, we waited, we continued to work with the old office. And then, all of a sudden, in February, a new office is revealed, announced, and crashes. It doesn't work. There's stacks and stacks of people trying to get a building permit, to do what's right for our communities and for their own houses and for building up our vacant properties. And so, it's devastating, I think, for us to see that government that we work hard to, to be a part of, to improve, failed so catastrophically. And what we want to do today is try to get to the root of exactly what happened. We did have a hearing, and I guess it was February, March, about this, but admittedly, I will be one of them to admit that we got a little caught up because the mayor's office had announced Be More Fast two days before. So, we had all kinds of questions about Be More Fast and how it's supposed to be integrated. But what we really needed to pay attention to, and what we are going to do here, is not talk about Be More Fast, but talk about the nuts and bolts of this permit office to make sure that our residents and those who are doing the right things for our communities get the permits that they need. This is important for so many reasons, as you'll hear from our colleagues and you heard from the president. Something like this, a catastrophic failure like this, does not instill confidence in city government, and that has to change. The other is that, just basics, it's going to cost a lot more and continues to cost more for our residents to be able to hire contractors who want to do work here because it takes them so much longer to get permits. The other is relative to vacant and abandoned properties, which, as many of you know, is a big issue that I work with a lot. And we are seeing still that people are rehabbing vacant properties with no permits. That is a threat to the health and safety of our housing stock, and again, does not provide confidence that we know what we're doing, particularly when we have millions of dollars on the line. We want to rehab these houses. We want people to do the right thing. We need to make it easier and better so that we can do the right thing and follow health and safety standards for those properties. So, I'm looking forward to this hearing to really get into the nuts and bolts about not just what happened, but what's really going to happen next. We want to focus on moving forward. We want to be partners with the department, with the mayor's office, with all of you to really bring this to the right place where people can feel confident they can upload their permit, upload the reviews, get their questions answered, and be able to then do the right thing for our city. I also want to thank the Fire Department, who immediately took our criticism, basically, and took action immediately to change what's happening there. There's work to do, but you did the right thing by moving forward quickly, by having a website that sets expectations, and by making personnel changes as well as adding personnel. That is the action and quick action we need to see from every agency when there is a crisis like this one. So, Mr. Chair, I'll yield back to you. I just want to thank again everybody for being here, but knowing that we have a major task at hand. Permits are totally not sexy. Absolutely. Nobody wants to talk about it. However, it is one of the major building blocks to address our vacant property crisis, and if we don't get this right, we are not going to get it right for our communities that need us the most. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The council president and Vice Chair Ramos have set the stage. I'm a firm believer in accountability. I believe that we said out, not only before the system was launched, but during the launch, that we, and I quote, "will have an accessible, efficient, and accountable system." I'm a person who believes firmly in systems. My job as a councilperson is to make sure that the systems that my end-users, who are my residents, the businesses that are using these processes, get the satisfaction that they deserve. My staff always laugh at me when I say this. My ideal city government is Nordstrom's customer service. I say that because when we're wrong, we're wrong. We admit we're wrong, and we figure out a solution to make sure that we address the need that the customer is presenting. I want to say that we've tried to get there, we're going to get there, but I know that this is the importance of this hearing today. It's important to highlight where we are in terms of metrics, to know how the system is performing, also about missteps that took place, so that we can learn from it, but also improve on it so that we, as a government, can deliver the product that we intended. I say that because housing, we'll say this all the time, I remember when we launched buying into Be More, and I said I was promised Zillow, and I got Realtor.com, right? But I say that because expectations are real when we make our, when we say things out loud. The words that we use in public mean a lot. So, I want to make sure that when we have this hearing, that the expectation that's moving forward is not only partnership, but being just transparent. If a system is failing, let's figure out what processes that we can implement together, what communication we can make the residents to make the expectations be meaningful, but also make sure that we're delivering the service that I believe that we deserve as residents of the city, no matter if you are the end-user who is waiting on a permit to be issued to your contractor, or you're the business that's waiting just to operate. With that being said, we'll go into agency presentations.
Good evening, council president, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the council, members of the community who have come to testify. For the record, I'm Justin Williams, Deputy Mayor for Community Economic Development. Here to testify on behalf of the administration on this status of the permitting efforts. I'm going out of order because I expected the community to testify after this, but I do want to speak to the people testified and those who are at home or haven't testified yet that we understand and recognize the real human impact behind the statistics we're going to show and talk about today. The people like yourselves who are developers, homeowners, community advocates, who've shared your experiences with the permit system, either here in person or with the council members in writing, and with me in the emails and telephone calls throughout the past few months. I want you to know we take your testimony seriously, and we've been listening, and we will continue to listen. The data we're going to present today will show some progress, but it doesn't capture the frustration of a contractor who couldn't get a straight answer about their permit status. It doesn't speak to the financial stress of the developer who is facing project delays or the disappointment of a homeowner who couldn't get their roof quickly repaired. It doesn't measure the impact of neighborhoods where planned projects have been stalled and on hold. So, we recognize and acknowledge that the permit system delays have caused real harm, that products were delayed, businesses might lose money, residents couldn't move forward with improvements. Developers may be saying Baltimore's not worth the hassle. That's on us. We're proud of the progress we'll make, we've made thus far, and we'll be showing today that we're going to talk about, but we know that doesn't undo the frustration for months that many of you have experienced. To the viewing public on Charm City Television, to those in the actual chamber, we're trying to bring up the presentation, so just bear with us for a few moments. Thank you. So, we have 15 minutes of presentation for you to go through, and we have the, obviously, the council, the agency representatives here to ask, answer questions. To start at the beginning, want to start by providing some important context. While the media coverage has sometimes characterized this permit overhaul, I'm sorry, the permit system transitioned at the overhaul of what Councilman Ramos mentioned as a new office. I think the framing misses a crucial point. This wasn't an optional modernization. It was essential infrastructure maintenance. Our in-house-built system was on its last legs, lacking even basic functionality to make data-informed decisions about our permit processes. We had no choice but to migrate to a new system, and Acella was the selected vendor. More importantly, as has been reiterated before and will keep, you know, reasserting, is that implementing Acella has not been intended to be the destination, it's the foundation. It's, the system change is always envisioned as an early step towards realizing our Be More Fast vision, that making Baltimore one of the best cities in the country for transparent and efficient building development processes. We've had some early wins on the Be More Fast front. I'll be honest, the extensive stabilization work for Acella has delayed some of the bigger Be More Fast initiatives, but immense these challenges. We've successfully worked with the council and the Fire Department to increase plans of view and inspection capacity. We've already launched a third-party review process for fire reviews and categories, and then the website has the letters and information to access that. We've started the process with the council bill that was, I guess, postponed today to move the zoning administrator to planning, which will allow us to have more capacity to handle the zoning review fluctuations and demand. I'm excited to talk about with Councilman Dorsey, the efforts we've been making on developers' agreements, streamlining. These are all important things that are moving forward. The Baltimore Banner quoted me recently as saying, "The issue of permitting is keeping me up at night." And what I meant literally is that I have a six-month-old, and it's not the six-month-old keeping me up at night, it's literally working on permitting because I've been helping and learning and doing the work myself and doing the training to move process, I'm sorry, move permits forward, taking the same training as the staff. In fact, when the Acella people came into town to help us on this tiger team we'll talk about, they were like, wow, we've never seen a deputy mayor dive in the weeds and learn the processes. But I say that as a, not as a humble brag, but to say that this is a sign of the administration's dedication to fixing this issue, that we know this is an important problem to be solved. And a small silver lining of this work, for me personally to be involved with the frontline permit text, I probably not have been involved with, except for this tiger team effort, is that I'm with them on holidays and weekends working, and I think they see that the mayor's office appreciates the dedication that they're putting into this work, and I've been also able to reinforce that the efforts that they are putting into processing permits are going to be crucial to attracting the investment necessary to spur Baltimore's renaissance. The data you'll see today, we'll talk, go through relatively quickly, shows we reached a critical milestone that we are now processing more permits than are coming in the door. Again, a milestone, but not the, not the finish line. And that seemed before we got to the point where we have auto issuance of certain permits, like the ones that Ms. Munson mentioned for homeowners, that where a simple permit can be done and issued in the same day or in the same hour. I look forward to keeping the momentum going with HCD as we complete the system stabilization and returning to advancing the broader vision to make Baltimore a premier destination for development and investment. So, it's a quick background. I'll go through these slides relatively quickly, and I won't read at you, but this slide talks about the background of where we started. Again, this was a process that began even before 2023, but we began the DHCD, began the review of permitting systems and processes, solicited input through surveys, focus groups, internal and external of users of the process, of who uses the process, and then also use that feedback to inform process improvements before Acella's launch, and then, of course, how, that things that were working when Acella was launched with the workflow. Also shown up here is some of the efforts to do trainings and provide information to both English speakers and then Spanish speakers to provide the guidance of how to use the system. And over the course of the three-day transition from old system to new system over 12 million records, we migrated. Just timeline, just for your background, I'm sure everyone's well aware of some of the issues, but at the go-live date, some of the initial issues we encountered were the issue with the transfer of old permits that were in process to the new system that created a surge that unfortunately kind of we are just starting to dig out from. There was an issue, we can go into it, but there were pins associated with every single permit and not associated with every single contractor or architect, so some... and not associated with every single contractor or architect. So some architects and contractors got hundreds of emails for each pin, and that caused the backlog and delay. Since the go-live date, there's been daily stand-ups early on with Asela. We've brought in more temporary staff in the housing department to do the kind of technical intake work. They've also been working over two thousand hours when the office is not open to handle the actual workload of helping clear out the backlog. And then in June with the council urging, the city administrator has implemented this tiger team to do this work and the people here, the well and behind have been part of that tiger team effort. Tasks were stabilized in the system technology, identifying some applications that can move more quickly, identifying long-term ways to streamline the overall process. This slide just goes to the representatives of the tiger team. And this is setting the baseline, some of you, when we met last week, we showed you this slide showing the workflow. For the people at home and I guess for posterity, this would be, I'm sure this would be on Legistar, is showing kind of the workflow that is in the new system of how we're handling the building permits and used and occupancy permits. These are the calls, I'm sure you're getting those, for you all, about where things are in the process. And just showing that sometimes permits, for construction permits, the permit's issued and then work begins, and then there's closeout inspections. That's one subset of building permits, and then the UNO permits are the ones on the right. That would happen either after construction is done in some cases, or when a change of ownership happens, or after a gut rehab of a project. This slide captures some of where we want to go with the building permit process and the complexity that happens, and we want to have more clarity on our website eventually. But it's capturing the fact that on the left side, a single, simple permit, like what the bar proprietor was mentioning for a quick change of outlet, would in theory get from intake to fee request to permit issued quickly. Currently with some of the system issues, we haven't gone to that point there, but we hope to have the auto issue process in place for this sort of thing to happen quickly and automatically starting the testing in early August. So an example of a simple permit would be a plumbing repair in a single-family home. And then going towards the right, a larger, more complicated project, like a multi-story condominium with ground floor retail and dining in a historic district and within a floodplain, would have different levels of review for the plan distribution process, if we refer to different reviews like in the gray box there. This slide also captures the different agency plan review types that are common for permits, but it doesn't even capture the full universe. For example, Liquor Board has its own hearings and approval processes, and the Health Department does as well for restaurants. So here on these next few slides are some examples of the challenges we have identified through the tiger team process. And then for the team after the go-live date on February third, to highlight the ones that have been significant for your awareness, the automations have been a problem, it's the tech issue, where certain times after switching from one task to another, saying the workflow step has been completed, an email would supposed to go out, or a change in status on the public-facing side should occur. That didn't always happen. There have been issues with integration with project docs. These are the, when more complicated projects have a plan review, it goes to what we call our project docs system. There's been issues with integration there so that when stuff happens in the product doc side, it's not going through the system through Asela like it was supposed to, to provide information that's clear to the public. And so that requires and triggers more phone calls to everybody, hey, what's happening with my permit? And this is a whole issue we expected to have with Asela, to have more transparency, to avoid the phone calls to you as the council members and to us and the administration. Unfortunately, that was an issue early on. We also had issues with GIS layers. The floodplain issue came up a lot early on, as did some issues with the zoning map destination, which caused more delays because the reviewers had to, instead of looking at the system and saying, oh, what zoning district is this property in? Had to go and look in an old legacy system or on code map. So that took more time. And also there's been issues with the reviewers early on, could not easily accept, push a button to say, this one's a simple one, no plan of view required, and so can move to the next process. These are things that we identified early on. So we mentioned technology as a challenge, also the people and process. We've had what I think was referred to as a perfect storm of some staffing issues in the plans of view office, where we had three retirements happen, and then another reviewer on FMLA early on who came back, but there's still delays there. And so that's just one example where there's been a problem with staff and we're, we'll get to that, one of the accomplishments of we're looking at doing to help with the staffing there. There's also issues with training the staff on the functionality of the system. We can get into that to more detail, but even issues like be able to search by permits, to be able to triage and send a set to a certain reviewer based on their experience, based on what is in the queue of like a simple one to be prioritized. Early on was not clear to the whole team doing permit review across the enterprise. And also the people issue of the surge in demand, so as there are more phone calls coming in, there are more walk-ins also coming in. And so the walk-in customer service work took people away from the process of doing the processing of permits. And so that led to backlogs, it had a self-reinforcing cycle. Also, there were issues of process, and this is where it's sort of process and technology where, for example, in the application intake form, we recognize early on, there needs to be clearer language and questions asked. Sometimes when we recognize a simple permit to not require a thousand questions about, hey, if you're doing interior work, replacing a light socket, why are you asking about my exterior, how tall my house is? The reason for that is because we combined our permit types into, what used to be nineteen into five permit types. If we, in doing so, made it easier for the public to apply for the permit because the complaint we heard early on was, I don't know which permit I need to apply for. The downside is that we have many questions that were kind of overly broad, and it's hard to code for the kind of questions. If you say, well, if I click interior trade permit only, then that means you should not have these other questions asked, but those are things that are in the works. And then also this, the last bullet point there in the process slide, at the guidelines and locations of where things are on the website, on our current website are not clear. It's not all in one place. And this is where hopefully the transition to the new website will have a clearer page, will have everything together, so people know what they need to do to get the permit issued. So quickly went through accomplishments, and I recognize again for the people in the audience and then also at home, that these accomplishments don't necessarily mean it's mission accomplished, but that we have made some gains here. I won't read at you, but some ones to highlight that are going to be, and have already been impactful, is like at the bottom, integrations, where we're fixing the project docs integration, so people doing the plans of view. Early on, the issue was there were plans of views, approvals being made in one system and not in the other system, and there were multiple calls and issues going back and forth. People calling complaining, hey, my permit's approved, or where is it? But there were still reviews that needed to happen in the project doc system. So we fixed those integration issues. We've made some other small improvements that we can make without messing with coding on our intake questions and provide us some better guidance. We've also improved an issue with the fire inspection that was confusing, some of the messages that went out early on, to not provide clarity on how and when you would need to request a fire department inspection. Thank you. Also, accomplishments on the people side. We have added staff capacity, we've added temporary staff, and we've detailed some more staff to help with the intake process. This is a big one, I think, I'm not sure if there's a slide for it, but we want, early on in June, where permits in the intake queue that had not been touched at all by a person, because they were waiting. And now as of, I think I checked earlier, that as of two days ago, or maybe Friday, that there were under two hundred that had not been touched. So we brought that queue down considerably. We are engaging outside firms to help with making positions, and there'll be, in fact, I'll be coming to you, Mr. Councilman and the comptroller, to submit a request, potentially to get more procurement to help bring outside help in. We've also done training for staff on how to search for the kind of the projects and the permits that need to be judged and can be queued more quickly because they're easy to be approved. We've, this is part of the process in the first bullet point there. We've identified the criteria for permits that can be issued without review. We haven't started that auto issue process yet, but the ones that could be auto-issued, that we know will be easier to process, we've had now a system to pull them and move them more quickly. We're also doing the ongoing iterative work, improving our training materials for the public. This slide talks about, and then maybe the bottom chart shows some of the green shoots of the improvements, where you see the call center data for the e-permits line spiked up in February when we went go-live, and so there were many more calls. Now, as we get into June and now July, the call volume's going down, sort of signifying there's probably fewer issues. But again, we're not saying we've accomplished everything, but we're getting in the right direction. And that is also shown by this slide here, which shows generally that the orange is permits coming in and the green is permits going out. And so we've finally gotten to that point now where we are getting more permits processed out the door than are coming in. I know it's late and a long time coming, but that shows where we're going in the right direction. Again, this is before we've had the auto-issue permits, where we've estimated that twenty percent of the permits could be in this auto-issue stage, which will obviously improve our permits going out. This slide shows, just for awareness, the permit types and where they are in the process, so that we have the breakdown. Obviously, the larger majority are the residential construction ones. But then number two is the multifamily commercial construction, three is used in occupancy. And the breakdown in the turquoise blue color is items on the city side, and then the, I guess, the beige color items were waiting for the applicant to provide more information. This slide here just shows where things are in process as of, I think, last week. And again, this number for intake, for example, it shows that there are many on the applicant side, because again, there are about two hundred that we hadn't touched yet. So the majority here, they're like waiting for the applicant to provide more information, provide upload plans, add a contractor, et cetera. So, as next steps, I won't read at you here, but some of the key ones that we're looking to do as part of the tiger team, again, continuing to address in the staffing needs. We're continuing the training work of, for the permitting staff across the enterprise, not just HCD, but again, this is across all the agencies working with Asela. As part of the process work, we are going to be continuing to working and resolving the process workflows, improving the application, and then continuing to expand the third-party plans of views. Again, it started, we mentioned, with fire department doing third-party plans of view, it's been successful. We look forward to doing that more with the HCD reviews for electrical, mechanical plumbing as well. And this will be where a certified professional can review plans as opposed to the city reviewing those plans. On the technology side, again, we need to, this is the big one, the top, first bullet is to test and implement the auto-issue permits. This will get us to a point where the easy permits can be done instantaneously if everything is done correctly and there's no other kind of issues, like you're in a CHAP district. We need to continue to work on developing better applicant communication to provide the information they need to update and have the permits issued or entered in correctly. We are also working on more integration with both the GIS level and then the project docs issue. And this is where providing more data will help us see where the bottlenecks are, and we can help update our staffing accordingly. Just a quick summary again, we know there are people who testified again, who expressed their frustration, and we know the progress that we've talked about today. This brings a holler from any of you who had experienced delays and costs to your businesses. We are saying we hear you and we look forward to hearing from, I guess, the council for more questions, and we appreciate you holding us accountable. We pledge and are committed to keeping the work, doing this work. The improvements outlined today are not a finish line, but a mile marker on our path to making Baltimore a place where it's genuinely easy to build, renovate, and invest. We know we're not there yet, but we're committed to getting there. Look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I saw that the Deputy CIO had her hand up, so we'll go to her then to council question.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Again, I'm Shamaya Kearney. I have the privilege and honor of serving as the Deputy City Administrator for the great city of Baltimore. There are just two things that I want to address prior to the council questions that we'll take. One was, I want to make sure that we make a distinction between the permit office and the, and the system. The reference was made about it crashing and being catastrophic. That is the system rollout. That is not the people who are doing their absolute best every single day to help us through the backlog of applications. And so I want to be, I'm sensitive to how we talk about that publicly because those people are giving their absolute best. And so if we could just make reference to the system as opposed to the permit office, because I don't want to give the indication to the public that we're talking about our staff. The second thing that I want to make sure that we address is the cutting of ties with Asela by DOT. Well, whether the selection of another system other than Asela by DOT. And I think there was a reference made that the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, so I want to make sure that we address that because there's reasons for why DOT opted to go with another system. And it's not that we didn't know that that was happening. So I'd like to ask interim Director Layman if she could provide some additional explanation for that, and then I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Leila Layman, interim CIO for the city of Baltimore. So as DCA Kearney stated, we are actually the IT for both the Department of Transportation as well as the Department of Housing and Community Development. So when we were notified by the vendor that they were sunsetting this product that was well over ten years, we were given about six months' notice that we had to stand up a new system. And so we worked with the Department of Transportation, reviewed various vendors, we took into account pricing, we took into account features, and we also took into account time, because we were given very limited time to ensure that that would be done successfully, to ensure a smooth rollout. When we took into account those factors and worked with the Department of Transportation, ultimately, OpenGov was the right solution for that time and for their needs, to meet their needs.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm going to go to the council president for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Williams, Deputy Administrator Kearney. As I stated in my opening, we have already expended millions of dollars to build the new Asela permitting system, but our city's permitting needs are still not being met. Asela is widely used by counties in Maryland and throughout the nation to manage construction permitting processes. So what's the issue? Why is Asela working in other jurisdictions but not here? Is this a technology issue? Is it an administrative and organizational process issue? Why has this thing struggled so much in Baltimore?
I'm starting to now ask anyone else if they would like to jump in. What I would say is that most system rollouts have challenges, and Baltimore City is and Baltimore City is not the only city that has had challenges with rolling out a system. In fact, there are other cities as well that have had some challenges with rolling out Asela, we're not the only one. And so we, I think, went through several slides acknowledging what some of the challenges were, so we've already kind of highlighted and shared some of the challenges that we had personally with the implementation of the system and the things that we're doing to fix that. So I'd ask Deputy Mayor Williams and/or Commissioner Kennedy if they want to add to that.
Good evening, Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner. I would agree with Deputy CIO Kearney that, you know, in our conversations with Asela, and since Asela has also been here, they've been with us through this entire process and time, that, you know, what we are experiencing isn't necessarily something that is unique to Baltimore. There have been other issues across some of the other jurisdictions, both in Maryland as well as other cities we actually have talked to. That was one of the things that we did. We talked over a year, and that was during the, I'm looking at my counterparts over at BSIT, because we had multiple conversations with other jurisdictions before we even entered into, and before BSIT kind of finalized contracts with Asela. into, and before BSIT kind of finalized contracts with Acela with other jurisdictions that had been using Acela and kind of knew what to expect, different things to watch out for, ways to improve what they learned during their rollout of the program. And we took some of those and some of those were, you know, newer to us. But I don't think that where we are right now and what has occurred in, you know, since go live was necessarily a failure of the system. I think it was, you know, what Deputy Mayor Williams stated earlier too, there was some perfect storm of different pieces, the need to move forward, and then also kind of adjusting some items as we go. So I would say that I don't think that there's a failure of Acela and a failure of the system, that there's been some adjustments. You know, one jurisdiction that I know of, you know, they, it took them a year to kind of work into and figure out even after testing and everything with Acela. I'm not saying that we want to be a year and we are pushing very hard with the Tiger Team as well as the work that we're doing before the implementation of the Tiger Team to work out some of those kinks of the actual system and workflows so that we can drive hard, as Deputy Mayor Williams stated, not just on the permitting software components, but also related to the other larger changes that we need to make that are related to be more fast.
Yeah, look, I understand that sometimes system rollouts don't go great. That's sort of a given, but like, I'm in this chamber and I think Deputy Mayor Williams, you get the same emails I get, I know council members get, like, it's not going well, right? Like, I'm not going to sit here and in any way equivocate and pretend that this has not been, like, if we can't use the failure, I don't know what other word there is for it. It just has not gone well. And that is across the board. That is large developers, some of which we heard from today, that is homeowners, that is small business folks. And so while I appreciate that no system is perfect and that, I guess what I'm looking for as a response here is like, why do we believe that this system, that Acela, did not work in its rollout? And I'm just looking for like one or two lessons learned here so that we can correct it as we move forward. And again, I just don't want to minimize or downplay that this rollout, I mean overwhelmingly, everyone that has connected with me as council president and that, with many of my colleagues is saying that this is unacceptably slow. And so, again, looking for some reasons for why we think this technology did not work in this moment.
So I, the slides had a fuller breakdown of the challenges. And I thought the one kind of question I had, and I'll tee it up for BSIT to talk through, is like, why couldn't we have done a more iterative rollout, recognizing any software system launch has struggles or has rocky moments? Why couldn't we start with a smaller gradual phased-in approach? And they've explained that there's, if there were issues, we had to bring everything over at one time. And so that's kind of, I think, that's the reason why, but that would be if we had a wand that could do it in a phased way to slowly do it and allow the old system to kind of go offline, we got the new system online, that'd have been an ideal way to do it. But there were technical issues that prevented us from doing that.
So in terms of lessons learned, right, we had a short window because of the old system, right? The old system, duct tape and bubble gum, and we were concerned that at any point something could happen and we would not be able to bring that back up. And so as we were going through this process, we, we went through it with that in forming our decisions. There were things when, Council President, when I look back on it, more testing, more testing, more time for testing, ideally, that would have been optimal. Again, we were one potential vulnerability from the system coming down though, and we had to take that and balance that in our decisions because we knew if the system would go down entirely, right? And now we're on paper, that could be catastrophic.
Could you explain to me the evidence for which, I've heard this a couple of times in these conversations, that like, there was this fear of this catastrophic meltdown of the old system? I didn't see or hear that among the users. I'm not saying it was great or perfect, but I didn't get like the urgency that I'm sort of hearing in retrospect, I did not, I didn't really process as like, again, like, I think you've spoke to most folks that were not thrilled, they didn't think it was an optimal system, but they didn't think it was like terrible or falling apart or duct tape and bubble gum. So when you say that we were like one inch from a catastrophic failure, could you explain why you believe that to be true?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, and I'm going to pass that to my, to Rob McBride in a second, but let me just kind of start by saying this wasn't, I mean, there are always obviously opportunities to improve the permitting system, right? And this, and Acela was, is that opportunity with that. And I hear what you're saying around like, look, I didn't hear from users that, you know, it was, it was awful. On the backend, right, is where we had concerns because this was a homegrown, built system and the code was not something that we could easily change on the backend. So as vulnerabilities come up, as things need to be changed, it's not something that could easily be done. And so I will hand this over to Rob McBride, our Director of Applications, to give a little more detail.
Yeah, Rob McBride with BSIT. So the code was compiled and we didn't have the original source code, which means that you cannot go back to that original and make a modification. And sometimes you need to do that if there's a change to some piece of the operating system that maybe there's a security patch that rolls out and the operating system needs to change its behavior slightly. And then you have to go sometimes to the application itself, change that, recompile it, and deploy it. And we didn't have the source code to be able to do that. And so if a security patch came out that we needed to apply, there was always that potential that it would break that current permitting system. And I understand it wasn't a problem from the user's perspective, but this was a problem on the backend as we were trying to support it. Does that answer the question?
Can I just make this very techless? So the person who created the source code no longer works for the city, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. That's helpful because it's easier for the public to digest it from a technical stance. You don't have the original source code or the mind power of the person who created the source code, so you don't know the algorithms that they respond, they relied on.
If we had the source code, we'd be able to understand it, but that person was gone and took the source code.
Yeah. And I don't want a Monday morning quarterback, but to me, that raises a question about why wasn't that person's workload transferred and why wasn't that data captured so that we're not relying on one single person who knows the source code that then leaves the city, I mean, this.
So, sorry, and a reasonable question, right? And again, hindsight 2020, this is also why we've been making an effort to centralize IT and professionalize it, have it all report into BSIT so that we can have multiple people and make sure that if we are going to build something in-house, it is in a code repository, right? That all the practices, it's centralized. But this, what we're talking about was something that was well over 10 years ago before, you know, before, before we centralized IT, before a lot of the people who were in leadership necessarily were in their roles, right? And, but this is a practice that we're trying to, that we are eliminating, right? Because of the vulnerabilities that that can cause.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems a little bit absurd that that's what got us here. But nevertheless, let me, before I close, I just, Deputy Mayor Williams, I just wanted to see if we can encapsulate, what are like two or three next step fixes? I read the slide, I saw about nine of them, but in the immediate, what needs to happen at this point in order to both address the large backlog and then also move forward with fidelity so that we're not here three, four, five, six months from now having the same hearing over and over and over again? I don't want like a long list, I just want to know like A, B, C, what you see as your, like, the immediate next steps. And just want to throw this out here too, is are we not doing the permitting czar anymore? Because there was a lot of talk in the previous hearing about a permitting czar, and now I'm hearing a lot about a Tiger Team. So just want to nail my terminology. Is the permitting czar not a thing anymore or is, is that still a thing?
Second question first.
Sure.
Part of the problem, the work on the stabilization has taken more effort than initially planned for, so that has delayed kind of the effort in thinking of how we want to do the permit czar and the be more fast work. That relates also to, I think, the city side or the process issue to identify what we could have done better is having a centralized person or office overseeing the permitting process because that is, I think, a big issue with our side, the city side of the rollout. One point on the tech side issue, before I get to the list in my head, and I am kind of riffing, and so people can correct me if I'm misstating. The tech side, one more issue with the rollout was the PIN number issue. And I have an after action to figure out if that was Acela's recommendation to us or our own joint thought, but that was the delay out of the gate, which the slide I had that had 800, a couple thousand permits coming in the month of February and only a trickle going out was because permits that were in the queue before BSIT found to a halt. And that led to more phone calls and walk-ins and everything sort of crashed. It was a perfect storm of customer service efforts. Had the PIN number issue not been a four-month, I'm sorry, four-week issue, that would have not created the huge backlog and that we're digging out from, there'd be still issues to go through, but that was caused a huge surge. As to fixes, the auto issue, I think, would be a big boon to the processing. So that would be the easy permits, people have said. It used to be the same day, within an hour, right away, to get a permit on simple things in those circumstances. When that's in place, we hope soon, we're testing in August, we can't guarantee the testing will go well, but if the testing goes well, then it'll be quickly done and implemented on the software, on the website. That will take 20% of the work away from humans to touch. There's still be safeguards because there's going to be inspection and then they'll be making sure that the work's under code. So that's the key, quick one that'll be huge on the tech side. Now I'm blanking on the other ones of the other B, C, and D fixes that'll be coming online. I mean, I think what I've been thinking about in my head of the be more fast side is how to work on the education side and the consumer and the internal side. Once we have things stabilized at a point for Acela, how do we make the information and materials clear to the public so they submit applications that are easy, that are correct, so it won't require back and forth with permit texts? And then also on the internal side to make sure it's clear, when a permit goes in, where does it need to go and teach them why? Because I think that's part of the issue, they kind of blindly send things to an office without understanding the full concept. And so as part of an ongoing education and kind of team building, we're already doing informally with the Tiger Team and saying, hey, when you send it to zoning, you only send it to zoning because the zoning issues arising, don't just send it to zoning because it's on the worksheet. So having the people understand why it's going to zoning for a review and why it's going to fire for review, a big issue. For example, we were sending a lot of UNOs early on to fire to be reviewed and didn't need to. It's because fire inspects on certain things, but we sent for fire review and that's caused the delay. And there's things like that, which the staff is working hard and diligently were doing, but, you know, we, the senior level, weren't doing a good enough job training and telling them like the big picture of what's happening. Now I want to cut you off, maybe there's other ideas of the Acela side, that'll be quick wins.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just very, very briefly, you mentioned centralized office, or is that a thing we're doing, sort of?
Yeah, I still fully intend, I think that is the solution for building permitting. It is not just the DHCD's permit office on the Benton Building. It's not their job to do the full permit process. I think it needs to be centralized in the mayor's office or in the office that is centralized with oversight over everything that is involved with building permits, to be in one place with one person to bring before you all, to criticize or laud for the work they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I know Councilman Ramos has a bunch of questions about sort of who's in charge of this whole enterprise, but I appreciate that. And I do think having a centralized entity that can help both city staff on one side and the users on the other side to be able to guide the process, I think would be extremely helpful. And so I would urge that that be stood up sooner than later. And actually, Mr. Chair would love to make this a committee request. I would love a report out within the next four weeks on the status of that centralized office. Does that, does that work for you, Deputy Mayor?
I will take this back and provide what information can be provided within four weeks.
If I could just ask for clarification there because obviously centralizing permitting across the city is not something that we can do in that amount of time. So are you asking about what the administration's plan is to get towards centralization?
Yeah, that's, that's it, Deputy Administrator. I would, I would appreciate a report back on a plan to get there. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Confirming, you got that, Tony? Perfect. We're going to go with Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your presentation and everybody working so hard on this. Just real quick to acknowledge what the Deputy City Administrator had said at her outset. I think I'm the one that's interchanging office and systems. And so I acknowledge that I have been doing that kind of carelessly, but I do want to publicly say that I know that the people in, that are in the office on the Benton Building are, are doing everything that they possibly can with the situation that they've been given. And so, you know, we obviously want to hear from them at some point as well. Obviously, they probably have some good suggestions. So I just want to acknowledge that when I'm talking about systems in office, I'm using them interchangeably. It is not to say that everybody in the office on Benton Building is a challenge because that's not it. They were given a tough hand. They were given, and it shows in the slides, they were not properly trained. So I just want to acknowledge that I know everybody's working really hard and I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you. I do want to just follow up real quick on the council president's questioning relative to this sort of centralized office. Does that mean that we're moving or the proposal will be to be moving from DHCD into its own office, the permit office?
I, I don't think we're there yet to move the entire office out of HCD. I think that was.
Not in terms of like physically out of the office, but you know what I mean? Like as the, since they answer now to the commissioner, would they be answering then to somebody else?
Yeah, I.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
I understand what you're saying, and I know some counties and some jurisdictions, Baltimore County has an office of permits, approvals, and inspections. And so I think it's something that's worth looking at. Short term, I can say confidently, there'd be a centralized permit czar, Director of Permitting and Development Approvals, centralized to have, to be charged with the full process. I guess I, I don't want to speak out of turn and say we're at the point of moving.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to have some clarity and maybe in your update report from four weeks from now, you might have a little bit more clarity.
I can see pros and cons to the concept. And so I would say it's something that we need to, want to explore and investigate. It's part of the reason, one of the other things we even delayed in rolling out is the be more fast advisory group is to help look at what are the best practices and what makes sense to move. I mean, some of the easy ones are like a no-brainer in my mind, we're moving zoning to planning, and that's going to have some synergies, I think, that'll be exciting. And so I think there certainly could be some synergies and efficiencies if things were combined, but there could be some other lost issues and things that might not be as tight if we move the fire review to some centralized permit system.
No, I was just trying to understand what you were talking about in terms of centralized because, you know, there are specialists in each agency that need to stay in the agency, like, you know, the, the stormwater people. I don't want them to move the permit office, I want them to stay at DPW, right? So just trying to get a sense, I was just trying to clarify. So look forward. So look forward to that report and obviously we'll have more hearings about this issue. My next question goes into this interaction between those who are, you know, were working with the system, which I assume is DHCD, but I could be wrong, BSIT and Acela, okay? So there are several things that seem to be just obviously wrong, like for instance. And you've acknowledged in some of your emails, back to me relative to some examples where the assignment, once an application comes in, somebody looks at it and the assignments went to the wrong people, meaning if they, if somebody had a, an issue in an area that had an urban renewal plan, right? That permit would go to, is supposed to go to the planner. This is an example of other things, right? So the planner for that area, instead it went to, I don't know who, and never got to that planner. So somebody told Acela to automate, to program that thing to, to say, once you get a permit that has a U R P, it goes to this person in the planning office and not this person. What, what happened there? Who is telling Acela to program it in a certain way that these kinds of errors, which seem to be on forced errors, has happened? Who is the one who's telling them that?
So the current issue where things stand, where there's the wrong assignment is...
I know you're fixing it. I just want to know how that happened.
Currently, it's, well, it's a human assignment. So the system, when it's working accurately with the GIS layer, shows that there is a U R P or CHAP or other geographical issue.
Sure, yeah.
The old system, the improvement we've done now is have it, ability to go to different people. The old system was a one to one person. I have a quashi who was the traffic cop for all the planning referrals and that was not a great system. So that's one of the things we've improved with the new Acela system. The issue has been, I guess, internal training and processes of like, when it's a U R P, it doesn't just go to someone in planning, it goes to the specific person. We are working with a GIS layer to actually identify the community planner for that U R P. So it can be done either automatically or the tech who's kind of making that triage decision will see, oh, this is a C H M U R P area, so that needs to go to the reviewer of that, the district. And so that's where we want to get. But short term, there were, there have been issues and probably a training and process issue internally of saying where they were assigned, it's somebody in planning. And unfortunately, we sometimes go to people in planning who don't review permits. We've said the Chris Riard thing. And so that has led to some permits being stuck.
I guess it's an example though of, of a couple of other errors like that where at, at some point in time, somebody told Acela to do it one way and it's not the right way. So what I'm trying to get at is how is that, who was telling Acela what to do and where things should go?
I think this is, I mean, I hear your, the perception you have, I think what's actually happened is, is right now it is, the system is telling a person, a permit tech, when it gets past a certain point, it needs to be reviewed and referred, where it needs to go. Or it's that it needs to be reviewed by planning. So that's all the system says. It is on the reviewer to say, it needs to go to Marie McSweeney Anderson for some renewal plan review. And then that would be that, that was, that's been the issue that we've resolved now with work.
Right.
Behind the scenes and the training and updating materials.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, it wasn't a programming issue. It was simply that permit needs to go to planning and then we need a referee to try to get it to the right person? And the training did not happen in order to make sure that what they were getting was getting to the, to the right person?
Right.
Okay.
There were issues with sort of automation where, for example, when they're, something in a PUD, a PUD review, so the system also says, hey, this needs a PUD review, it's any PUD, but didn't say which one, but it says it's in a PUD. If it goes right to the PUD review, it should go to, I know this clip on this fork, Eric Tiso, my design team, but it would go to the UDAP, Urban Design and...
UDAP, it's fine.
UDAP tab, which had no reviewers in it and so it's a self forget stock. So that is probably giving the wrong information or the coding sit for far too long or fix that referral issue.
I guess what I'm trying, because the other example is the, the putting all of the permits into one bucket as opposed to saying simplify, you know, simple permits can go, you know, and then there's the more complex ones. That to me seemed like a systems issue where, you know, the, the instruction was not given properly to Acela as to how to per, to program it. I'm just trying to understand the interactions between getting all this input from the 28,000 people that were given surveys and 900 responses, which I'm impressed, it's a pretty good response. And I'm glad that that was done, to then translate that into new workflows and workflows that then went to Acela. I'm just trying to understand the interaction between the, you know, the, the department or whoever and, and Acela, because there's all of these kinds of errors that seem to be things that should have been thought through ahead of time.
Yeah, I'll pass the DHCD because a lot of this predates me and in power of practice, I would hear the complaints about, you know, 19 different permit types, but how do I know which one to apply for?
And I can talk to that last piece as well. That was the item during our budget hearing that I, in my opening remarks stated that we made a, we made a error or misjudgment on what we were looking at, at workflows at that time in terms of moving the permits. So we took them down to those original, you know, down to kind of the five consolidated. And then during testing, it was showing that that would be able to be picked up and still moved, which there are permits right now, even without the automation, we do have permits that are being issued within 24, 48, 72 hours, just in the normal workflow. So that is happening. And with kind of real world application, it was like, no, the volume is actually greater and we need to rethink that and go back and, and make that change. So as I stated during our budget hearing, that was a analysis that was done in terms of workflow management, you know, talking through different things with Acela. They've provided feedback to us on certain things that we thought, you know, we should take out of the workflow and they're like, no, 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 like best practice, you got to keep it in, which means someone has to touch it, which we were trying to actually reduce someone touching it. And they're like, no, our recommendation is that someone does touch it at this stage, which is the application intake piece as well. So we wanted to like move some things out. So I would say that there's pieces of it that are iterative, where it's been conversations back and forth. And on the one that is key, that was a decision and we needed to reverse that decision once we were in, in moving and knowing what the volume would be. And then we're going to be able to now pick up about, like we said before, about 20% of the permits will fall into that automated bucket. So I don't think that that was, that we gave something necessarily that was wrong or incorrect. It was during the iterative process of analyzing and workflow and conversations with Acela and their scripting and programming and what they had seen in other jurisdictions, we went with one format and now we're changing that format. So I don't know that I would say that it was necessarily wrong, but it was a, a decision that in hindsight, you know, we're changing and that was one of the ones that we identified early on and started to make that change and mix on that because we brought that up, like I said, at the budget hearing.
No, I appreciate that description of how it was going back and forth. I appreciate that. I guess I'm just trying to understand, there were still some things that were not quite ready, like, you know, we, we were excited about this new system and then knowing that you weren't fully staffed yet. I mean, I'm not quite sure how a, a system gets launched when you don't have the full staffing that you need. Like one of the slides talked about the fact that you didn't have enough reviewers, you didn't have enough, some other things. And so I'm just curious about the decision to move forward when, when things weren't ready yet. Now, I, I mean, we understood the sort of catastrophic nature of the old system, but I don't know that it was imminent, like you didn't have a virus or something that needed to be replaced, as from what I understand. So I think, I'm just trying to understand why we weren't ready. We just weren't ready to launch the system. And I'm not quite sure why we moved forward until we had all of this in place. I mean, I'm glad we're getting staffed up and it sounds like, you know, that's moving quickly, but it, it just doesn't seem like we were ready. And, and as I said in the BSIT hearing, like, I know I was the one pushing a lot to, to get this done, but you know, you can always come back to us like you did a year before saying we need more time.
I'll, I'll take a little bit on the staffing. I think some of the staffing, especially on the plans reviewers, that happened, you know, in a perfect storm of go live. And some of it is also just hiring. We had had interviews ahead of time and had offered positions. We had some people, you know, accept the position. And then after they accepted the position, they were like, no, sorry, we don't want the position. So that created some of those kind of normal staffing. I don't know that on the plans reviewer side, that it would have necessarily made sense to hold up the entire system. And we did make that decision. That was a conferred, we had multiple conversations about it between DHCD and BSIT and, you know, reliance on and talking with kind of the experts in this, in this space. And it was a decision to move forward at that time. That did mean that there were some, you know, was, were we able to do every single iteration in the sun of testing? No, but we did a significant amount of testing. We were testing in the system for months. And then you have kind of staffing, which the staffing could change. We could have waited until we were fully staffed in one area and we could have had staff retire that same day or two days later. So I don't know that that would have gotten us to where we are. And we did, you know, we had staff that did start with us right around the launch, like brand new additional permit texts that were hired and brought in. So they did, and we're starting around there. And then we also brought in additional attempts as well.
I can add to that. At launch, within the permit techs office, which is the staff that are the first ones that touch it, we were, we had one open position. So we were the closest to fully staffed that we've been in the last five years. However, it is a less experienced staff than I've had in the past because we had hired a lot of new people in the last two years and, and some people moved up. But then we also had more supporting staff outside of the permit tech office with Shanika Lewis as the permit liaison and taking on that role. And Alicia Nabab in the inspections Division, who had previously been a permit tech, they were actually able to lift a lot of the weight off of the permit tech position because when people rolled in or called, they were able to answer those questions that prior staff, at least in the inspections office, didn't have the background to answer. So in that sense, from a staffing point, we were in a really good spot. The, the engineering department, we made offers to two different people three times. So six offers went out to fill those positions over the course of the year. We started recruiting as soon as we knew about the retirements and we just haven't been able to fill those spots. People would accept the job and then call back and have taken something else. So right now we've got two positions that are, you know, people have accepted and we're hoping they start and can be trained and thrown in there. And then we're looking at alternatives as backup to catch up. But that, that reviewing process is separate from the software and everything else. It would have been the same position.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation. As I've said publicly before, Ms. Lewis is a miracle worker and I'm grateful for her if she's here. And, you know, she's been very helpful to so many people, so please pass that along. The other, the last question I'll have for this round is who's in charge now? What's happening now in terms of, I think that we saw that the Deputy City Administrator is in charge at this point for the tiger team, but do we have a director? Do we, is it, who, like, who is it that we should be CCing on emails besides all of you to, to get the things done and to understand where we're going to be receiving the reports and what's, who's in charge here?
I think as to the tiger team, Deputy City Administrator, Kearney. I think short term, I think you've been copying everybody whenever there's an issue from the city administrator on down. I've stepped up to be kind of heard does need the full process. I think future state will be that there will be the permit czar position to be tasked with overseeing everything. There is in the permit office in the Benton Building, there was a manager of the permit techs, which we can go into if you want to go, if that's where you're going towards, which I think it's worth lifting up and clarifying for you all, the org chart so that you all know.
Sure, I'll make that a committee request to get the, the org chart of the, of the office and sort of all the branches. Thank you for that suggestion. And yeah, that would be, that would be super helpful to get. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm just going to go super techie. Who tested this thing and what dates did they test it? And may I have a list of those who tested it in terms of super users and staff? So first question, who tested? How long did they test it for? And then may I have a list of super users who have used the system before and then staff who tested it?
If you're looking for an answer now, I think I'll let the team weigh in. One issue I'll flag is what the problem was, why we couldn't test for the biggest issue in my mind is the PIN issue in the front end, which, yeah, which in much respect would have been great to catch and testing, but that just wasn't part of the thinking and that caused the initial backlog that we're digging out from. So I don't know if the team wants to share the data of testing, I think it's significant.
Yeah, I don't have individual numbers right now, but we tested for months. It was all the agencies that are involved, so DHCD, Department of Planning, DOT, Fire, DPW, Health were all involved. There was training before the testing. It was all online testing and then there was trainings that occurred online. For staff, I don't believe there was any in-person training that I remember, but there was extensive testing. Part of it is the data conversion was a major lift and everything that came over is kind of in different places. So that also takes a lot of time for staff to process those and, and get those straight. Whereas stuff that's coming in to the system new is a bit cleaner and a lot easier to process. And it was hard to test with data conversion piece because we didn't, we didn't do any conversion of data in the, in the test environment. So everything was creating, creating applications and then processing applications and seeing, you know, the different scenarios of how it would go through.
So I'll level set because my background's in computer tech analogy, right? So here's my simple ask to you BSIT. I would like to know your timeline on data cleansing, because I know you had to at least do an evaluation of the, the old system to see what data has to come over. What communication we made to Acela about addressing the individual variables into the system that would need to be addressed? And how do we do the data cleansing to make the migration actually work? I just want to be transparent because this is what we call in technology junk in, junk out, which means that there were some issues that either were, either issues that were vulnerabilities in the testing environment that we did not perceive, or we did not properly either train staff or ask staff what were issues that they ran into. Case in point, if we're pulling from different systems, then why wasn't our agnostic code created to then pull from those different systems at the same time to do a clear migration? Because I believe, is Acela cloud based? Perfect, right? So in order to be cloud based, we would need an agnostic code to bring in all those systems from your old firm, whatever your, your hardware was. So what I would like to know is the data cleansing process, what variables that we give them to actually do the actual migration? In addition to that, I would like to know the timelines for migration, from the initial evaluation of the migration to the actual data pull to actually do data cleansing forward. In addition, that for DHCD, I would like to know the timeline for staff who were trained and then also how long they were actually in the testing environment prior to go live. So typically for the public's consumption, before you go live, you're training on each module in the actual test environment to make sure that the person can actually perform it. I would like to know how long the staff actually spend time in those modules, what feedback they gave back. You can put in any type of memo you like. I don't care if it's 20 pages or 30 pages. I just want to know... I just want to know exactly up until go live, what happened, what mistakes that we made? And just be transparent about it because this is, and I don't fault people for how things go live. But I do fault that there are things that we should have learned from even doing, um, what was the system that we all started when we first got here? Workday, right? Workday should have been the biggest sign that we probably should have stayed in a testing environment to make sure it didn't work. Because at that time, we weren't paying people. Because people did not actually input their social security numbers into the old system, right? So I just want to make sure that bef, I just want to know those timelines. I could ask you all the rest of these questions, but everything starts from exception right at this point. That's helpful for us to communicate to the public. I'm still waiting for a dashboard, uh, with metrics. That's important to me because I can't hold you accountable if I don't know how long it takes for a basic permit is, how can I get a fence? How tall does my fence have to be? Do I need a bonded person to do said fence? So I would like a update on when I can get a dashboard, what the public can get a dashboard. Even if it's a draft or what the dashboard will look like, I think the public should see what we would need. And then we should select feedback on what that dashboard should say. In addition to that, my question is, as a follow-up, I still have people who say they don't have access to their old permits from the old system and the pins. I would like to know where we are in terms of the backlog for those pins. And making sure that we are addressing friends who are in, I call it permit purgatory. Because they're still waiting. Anybody have a question? Anybody? Anybody have answered?
As the last one, I think we can answer that. I mean, short term, well, people who've contacted you should, I mean, Shanika Lewis would be the best person to refer people with PIN issues that need, because if it's not through, there's probably some issue that needs to be triaged, that needs to be handheld through.
We've passed it along. I'm just, I'm just taking note from even just cursedly looking at email from staff that we've had multiple PIN issues. She's helped us figure it out, but this person had 16 pins, right? But it was only for one house. And multiple contractors, right? So, but each person had multiple pins for their actual work.
Yep. So, um, the PIN issue, it was, it's, it's a many-to-many kind of circumstance. It is not a one-to-one, as you're saying. So we did on the backend for where we had the data to connect people, um, with all of the information. We were able to connect most people to their permits. There was a bucket of people who there was not enough information in the old system. And so for them, we do need to do, there's nothing else we can do from the data that we have and we need the people to call in. They can call into the call center. We can, they do not have to, you know, come in personally, but obviously if you provide, provide the information, we can resolve it as well.
Here's that Nordstrom customer service. How come we haven't reached out to them? Right? To fix the error, right? If we have something that has not moved, that has a PIN attached to it, why haven't we contacted them to fix the error? Right? If, if we have John D has 12 pins and he's not moved on any of these pins, why haven't we contacted him to say, hey, you have not moved on these pins or these permits? Would you like to re-input them into our new system so that we can get updated on it? And you can start a new process and make the data cleanse and we just ignore what's in the old system? I'm just wanting to make sure that we're it's the, it's the avoid the error and fix the error with, in the easiest way fa- fashion.
So it's not that simple in the sense that we brought over four years' worth of data. So that's at least 160,000 permits. Each permit would have its own PIN. There are some people that have pins, received the emails about their pins, but they don't need that permit anymore. They, they pulled the permit, they did the work, they had it inspected, they're done. So identifying who's got those 12 pins and needs help and who doesn't isn't very clear. Because some people never need to go back and look at their permit. Or they've abandoned that permit and moved on, maybe abandoned the project or reapplied or, or their initial application that came in in 2024. They ended up changing it up and so they reapplied and got that permit. They don't want the first permit. They don't care about it. So there's a, there's a lot of information out there in the way that, how people apply for permits. That would make it very difficult to, to cipher out who we would need to contact and who we wouldn't. So we ended up emailing everyone, uh, multiple times with the PIN process and then with, um, if you need help, here's how to get help. So that communication went out to people by email in, in mass. And then the ones that we could, um, move over, you know, we, we did that work.
No offense, but that's like taking an offer and to abdicate responsibility, right? I would rather we do a data cleanse and get it right to know where the system is in terms of the pins. Rather than just saying, I emailed you, I now have put the ball into your court like we're playing tennis to make sure that you address it. I'd rather us go through, pay attempt to actually go through the pins, evaluate the pins and say that these things have been closed out or not. Because you can't, um, can't absolve yourself of an error that happened and that people may not be aware. I'm, I'm just being transparent with you because I find it difficult to navigate the system from actually looking into it myself, right? And I, and I, I think I'm pretty tax, taxing of you. So I just want to make sure that like, we have temps. This could be something that someone's devoted to, to actually evaluate and cleanse the data on this side of it. Because this isn't just a simple V lookup and let's find out what doesn't match true or false. This is more so, this thing is out there. We don't know what's happened to this thing. Let's actually go out and fix it. I don't want to say that I, they sent you an email so you can fix it. To me, residents are going to say that's not enough. I'll give you an example. We all have student loans, most of us, right? If the student loan person sent you, hey, I need you to fix this thing and it was their fault, how are we going to feel, right? Just saying, let's level set. Let's imagine that you're on the other side of that computer, you get that email and there's an issue. I think that there is, and I would like to make a request for this, is that we evaluate the staff costs to do the data cleansing. To make sure that we have fixed the things with the PIN side of it. Because I think that's worth an exploration to make sure that we got that Nordstrom's customer service.
Councilmember, if I could, um, there was an effort to reach out to, to some people individually. I'm aware of an effort that for anyone who had over 50 applications, which is a very high threshold, that there was some outreach to those individuals, but that's not to suggest that there could not have been more in terms of reaching out to people. So I, I hear that point. I would also just add that obviously from a capacity standpoint, especially since from the beginning of the rollout of the system, um, we started to have a backlog of applications very quickly. That there just wasn't the capacity to do that. But I think that as, uh, we've shared with, uh, council and, and staff last week, that there is an effort to do some data cleaning that is part of our next step as a part of the tiger team. Is to look at some of the applications that are currently in the system to identify those that can be closed if there's been no activity after a certain threshold of time. That is going to take some manual effort also. So that's not going to be a quick fix, but there is, um, going to be an effort to do some data cleansing. Um, and so for the PIN issue, um, we will do what as requested, which is to look at staff costs. But obviously we would have to, um, hire some temporary surge capacity in order to be able to do that work.
And for my last question, are we planning distress tests after we level set and stabilize the system? Because we can get to a stable system, but how long are we going to stay there?
I think if you're asking, I think you're asking is as we get permits moving quickly through the system, through the intake process, where is the next bottleneck going to occur? And that's been something we've been focused on. There's been some data constraints on time in, time out, which we're working through this other, but we do have, there's a slide showing where stuff is in the process. And we have some sense already where the staffing issues are now. So for example, the reviewers for electrical, um, and mechanical of reviews. So that's one we're working on quickly to bring in some additional help. And also want to look for, I'll be bringing to the councils, third party review for those sorts of, um, reviews, which I think will help reduce, if that's where you're getting at, like the stress and like the additional, um, backlog that might be created when things happen. Also working on the zoning side, we know that'll be an early backlog. And so bringing in, one of the benefits of moving zoning to planning is that there already is going to be the built-in help, the people in planning wrote the zoning code. And their, Laney's team, Eric Tussos here every day, as you know, talking about the zoning code with you all on the committee. So his team can help with that work on the zoning side. And so just thinking through where there could be other issues, but I think those are the big ones that we're thinking about and don't have the perfect data yet, but we know it's going to be happening. And so we're getting ahead of it.
It's kind of helpful, but not helpful. I say that because it's their beta test and it's going to take place. What is the patches that we're requesting from Exela? How much are those, uh, actual patches going to be from Exela to improve your, into your system improvements, right? These are all things that are, I can say this. I em, I empathize, but I don't empathize. As someone who worked at a school system that had to take thousands of young people's records, including mine, and build a custom system that was cloud-based with more records than you did, all the way back to the 1980s, right? And had to digitize those said records. And they did it and there was no issues with the rollout, otherwise in teaching people how to actually input a new student application, right? That was the only issue. But I could access my own records, even my sister's records and may see how far it goes back. I could see my report cards from kindergarten in the system and how we integrated things that will hard copy into a digital-based system. And it costs just as much as the system. At $6 million. I'm just going to end it there and just refer to another council member. I'll go with Councilman Jones.
Council, Council Chair Torrance. Um, so look, we'll provide you the data around the data cleanse. But the data actually was, was not the, the issue. We migrated the data over a period of three days. We, um, and it was, it was not the easiest of tasks. There were issues. There was missing data. Um, but the data was cleansed and that, that was actually very successful in this. This was not a data issue, just to, to be clear. But we will be happy to provide you with, um, the requested information.
Let me clarify. I think there's, the cleansing is important, but the coding in terms of the agnostic code to speak to your various different systems didn't work, right? So that to me says that we weren't prepared. And that's the hardest part about doing migration to get to a cloud-based system. You don't know until you get everything over and you start implementing the actual system. So I empathize with BSIT, but these weren't common issues that other jurisdictions had, right? There was just, I will, let me rephrase that. There were common issues that you experienced that other jurisdictions had, but the issue that we're having, I've never seen a slowdown as much. So I would even take it even further. I would like to know the estimated cost of lost revenue we had from the system not being able to process all these applications. I'm pretty sure we have that number. And I would like that in the next two weeks. Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as a councilperson, I like to say that, look, we're, we're on a ground level. When things go wrong, we're often the first people to hear it. And I'll say permits, permit delays still one of the top three issues, maybe even top two that I hear in my office. Uh, which means the problem still isn't completely fixed. I will say we've come a long way since where we were in February when I received a bunch of calls. But I, I want to say we still have a lot further to go. And, and, and I think it's important that we do it quickly and make it a priority. Um, while I recognize a lot of you juggle all the responsibilities rather than just permits and getting this permit stuff done. I guess my request is that we make this a priority to get it done quickly, um, but ripe. Because look, we, we all got in a local government to make impact, um, and to make a positive impact. I think also the truth is when the ball's dropped or when impact is, results are delayed, we still make an impact. But a negative one, um, that other people often pay the consequences for, uh, as we heard from testimonies. While I thought this hearing would be really simple of learning these other problems. This is a potential solution and this is how we fix it. It seems to be a lot more convoluted than that. Especially with the direct act from council president, which was a good question. What are the top three issues? And how we can get them done? Like, it still was a complicated question, I guess. So, uh, just to make things really simple, my question is when can we have a process and a product that we can be proud to deliver to the residents of Baltimore? Like when, rather than like what are the convoluted, like what's that timeline look like? And what are some realistic benchmarks in between that timeline? I guess that's my question instead of making this thing more complicated than, than, than what it is.
I'm hesitant because I, I, I recognizing I can't give a guarantee and that you'll, um, hoist us on, uh, the batard of, I mean, we're working iteratively every day and we are meeting daily still to keep this permit system moving forward. Because it's, it's that important that this team here and people behind in the city side are that dedicated to this work. I can say already, we've seen measurable progress again. And my colleague here made the point of emphasizing that we've, there are delays definitely ongoing in the rollout and there's delays currently that we're seeing, but we are getting more out the door than are coming in. There's some stabilization, there's some green shoots, some of the things we can auto, like, issue when, when it's rolled out officially and hopefully of the testing in August. That'll be some break, that'll have a lot of, uh, spin-off effects to the whole system because it'll be less work for people to do when 20% of the work's already done by a computer. So that's, that'll be one benchmark. But I think, I guess, I will not be, I will not rest and not feel comfortable about the permit system until it is a point where the merit, um, uh, person, merit representative testified that every permit goes through as quickly as it does when there's a tension on, uh, radiating a tornado. And that the permit can fly through. That is where we want to go. And I think we'll keep working to get there. That's my pledge to keep working actively to get to a point where it's predictable and we meet the timelines, um, that we set. The surface level agreements of like, hey, you're expecting to get through this part of the process and if it's not, that's significant. And there's a media issue. We're going to start holding people accountable to that. But unfortunately, we're not quite there yet. And I'm not comfortable even holding ourselves accountable to dates because the data is so noisy of what comes in and what comes out and why, when is it in officially and someone's bucket to look at versus just in a queue in the right, in some place, but not in that person's inbox to review. Sorry, it's not a great, and I know it's not the answer you're looking for. Like, we're going to have a mission accomplished by end of this year.
Yeah, you know, and I, and I understand not wanting to commit yourself to a date, but I, but I recognize myself. Unless I give myself a deadline sometimes, I may give myself longer time than really need to get something done. And I think the people of the city need a result, like they need change, they need this to get fixed. And I think it may, I would challenge you all to give yourself a date where we can prioritize this. Because you do more than just permits. And if we have more time, we'll spend that time fixing something else. Putting out another fire. And this fire, I feel like has been going on way too long. For far too long. So my, my challenge for yours, like, let's make this a priority. Let's, we've took months to analyze what the problem is. And I think we all now, after seven, eight months, know what the problem is. And we should have an idea of how long it's going to take to fix that problem, if we make it a priority.
So if I could, I, um, just want to address that. So, um, you heard a commitment from the city administrator as a part of her budget hearing that permitting would be a priority and that she would establish the tiger team. So this is a priority. Um, all of us do have other jobs that we have. But we are every single day sitting in a room, triaging and prioritizing and figuring out what is the best way, uh, to make fixes and improvements to the system. Um, and so know while there is not a date that we can say December 1st, 2025, um, what we can say is that by the fall, we think that we will be in a better position than what we are now. Because again, we are going through conversations with Exela. We are sitting down. Because again, we are going through conversations with Acela. We are sitting down, triaging, we're doing process mapping. We're going through business flows. We're doing the testing every single day. And so you have heard a commitment from this administration about this. This is a priority. You don't have to challenge us for that to be a priority. It already is. And so what we can commit to is that we will have more improvement than what you see right now by the fall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. So thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you everybody for being with us today for informative and important conversation. Let me a few, just a few things and I think probably fairly quickly, I think beginning with Deputy Mayor Williams. When the Be More Fast process and, and kind of idea concept was first lifted up and idea of permit czar and things like that. I know there was a lot of energy and, and genuine excitement, excitement not in the rah rah, but like this is really important. We're glad the city leadership, the mayor and, and the mayoral administration are, are jumping in full force alongside DHCD to, to work towards progress here, including among residents and folks in the community. I know I had one person who was interested in serving as the, as the, the permit czar and so I passed along that information. Another person who applied to be on the advisory board who would be excellent, both of whom would be excellent in those roles. And I'm sure there's people in all our districts who, who would love to be part of the team making this happen because everyone knows how important it is and there's, and there's good resources and skills in the community to, to come alongside this too. Remind me, are, are we actively hiring for a director of permitting? Is that something we're doing? Is it, is it you right now? This is totally final or the?
At this point, yeah, by default it's been me and I'm happy to serve that role and I, I care deeply about getting the permit system right. I think I mentioned the councilwoman Ramos. I think we owe the report or the answer about where things are going in four weeks. But that is, so the role's not posted. That's been part of, like we've been focused on getting this stabilized before focusing on like what level of seniority and what person would be the right person for this role.
I appreciate it. I thought I heard that in the conversation, but your conversation with the councilwoman was so substantive that I, I wasn't sure that I had caught, caught everything. The second thing, the Be More Fast Advisory Board, do we have any progress on that? Has that board been?
Again, similarly, it's like, so that's my vision was to have the permit czar kind of work to stand it up. And so that's been like the problem of getting that work done, to get the board. And I've also received lots of interest, which is exciting that people are interested in this issue. It's like the timing with the abundance movement is like everyone is really passionate about this, which is great. And I, yeah, I recognize this Acela system delay has been delaying everything else that, on that side. But we haven't, again, we haven't done some of the work slowly and quietly behind the scenes. Not, not the big advisor group, not the permits czar, but we've been moving some reforms, prevention, developers agreement process, the fire, marshal, staffing review, a few other things, working a third party review.
Sure. I'm going to come back to that in a second. It, it seems as though we have about 6,000 permits currently in the backlog. I think I saw that on one of the charts. And permits have been coming in approximately 750 a week over the last, I'd say, two months. It was higher before that earlier in the year. I, we're, we had 19, on this chart, we had 19 weeks in a row where the permits applications outstripped the process permits. And now we're four consecutive weeks of, of the reverse. We've seen progress on processed applications, but also newly submitted applications have fallen over that time. But still, it's trending in a, in a good direction. At 6,000, that would be about eight full weeks of capacity if no new permits came in to address the backlog. Do, do we have some sense of, of, of what progress looks like there? Yeah.
So one thing that I guess we're sort of related to the old system permits in the queue and sort of to address what Councilman Torrance is getting at is like, if people had just permits that hadn't been touched in the old system and we recognize there were delays, an issue with getting a PIN, but if it hasn't been, the PIN that hasn't worked for now seven, seven months now, we can feel pretty confident they would have called and escalated it. And if they haven't called by now, that sort of means the permit can be considered abandoned, not officially, but we're getting to the point soon. So there will be a point relatively soon where we are going to feel comfortable to I guess avoid or close the permits in the system so that will reduce.
Do you have some sense of how many are lingering from the old system?
Do we have that number? Do you, I think maybe Jason's looking up, but um.
I'll just make that a request.
So many numbers in my head, so I don't have it.
Sorry. I mean, if we don't have it right now, I'll just make that a request. How many are still lingering? It'd be, it'd be good to know that. I, I take the point that we're reaching a point where that'll be a necessary thing. What's the, so you know, we're seeing applications processed. What's the, granted, some permanent applications are, are really simple and get processed really quickly, hopefully if things are working right and some are much more complicated. What's the, what's the average length of time for a permit to be processed now? And what, what was it, you know, in the middle of, of the, the critical period?
And that's sort of the, I guess, the big issue hurdle we've had is like, what kind of permit? I hate asking the question back to you. Is like the simple permit, when it was a trade permit, correct me if I'm wrong. Like there was, if it didn't have an issue or was a chapter district during floodplain, it would, it would be as soon as the information was in. And the simp on the, on the old system and that we need to get, we're going to get back there as soon as the auto issue process is tested and implemented on the 20% of permits we think that kind of come in the door.
Sure.
So it'd be instantaneous.
But that, but there's still, I mean, I don't know how to say this, like even, even recognizing the diversity of permits, there still is on the whole an average. And you could compare that average over a period of time if you wanted to.
I, I just would add that I think it, it is going to be very specific to specific permits. I hate to go back to this and, and keep, because an average necessarily doesn't tell the entire story. Because there's a significant amount of data or different components that await or are needed from the public to provide that information.
Great.
And there are times when, you know, we, we might wait two months to get information from the public or there's multiple iterative processes in terms of their plans, reviews and, and comments, whether or not it's stormwater comments, force, you know, all the different review components that kind of go back and forth that add on to that average time.
Some only need three reviews, some need dozen reviews. I've walked alongside plenty of them. I get that. So it, it would be helpful to know then, and in terms of whatever category the department wants to break it into, what arc, and so whether that's five categories or 10 categories. I mean, whatever seems to make sense to you all who, who do this regularly and, and kind of have some sense of how to compare apples to apples, right? It'd be great to know what our current average in those categories as you define them, length of time to, to complete a.
To give you like a concrete example, because I hear what you're saying and I would love to get to the point to have on the website or just anecdotally say like, yeah, which, and 80% of the time when you're trying to get a new roof deck, it's kind, you're going to get it within this period of time, but there are outliers or people, sometimes applicants submit terrible plans and they, I've seen times it's five and six emails and iterations back and forth to get it right.
And to the point media, I mean, feel free to offer it as a median then rather than as a mean because you avoid the outliers at that point, right?
Right. So I definitely recognize the goal. And so one example is like I was on email with councilwoman about a project where, and I won't call people out, but it was like, we had a show with our project doc system, how my, how long it was in the reviewer court, how long it was in the applicant court. And like 300 days on applicant side. So there's some that you still know.
Right.
But I guess I can say that we have a goal on like the first review of 30 days right now. So like if everything's right on the front end on most of these plans, it could be approved, a building permit plan could be reviewed and approved, but.
And, and I don't mean to hold up the processing time as the be all and end all whether the system is working because, because we can do everything completely right, both on the human side and on the technology side. And, and if, and if our conversation partner isn't, isn't conversing effectively with us, well, that's, that's not on us. So I don't, I, I don't, so I don't want to hold it up as the, as the only thing, but it still does seem like relevant, helpful information.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm, these numbers are great again on this, on this slide. I'm curious, what were the, what were the weekly in general, a year ago, say, what did the weekly newly submitted permanent applications, what was that weekly volume coming in? And what was our weekly processing under the old system? Yeah.
So the, the not, what a permit was in the old system is a little bit different than what a permit is today. In that, under the old system, if you wanted to extend your permit, reinstate your permit, add a contractor, make an amendment, that you had to apply for as a permit. The new system now has a parent child relationship where you can amend that existing permit. In the long run, that will make a lot of things a lot simpler for inspections, for processing, for going back and looking at the history because you just have everything tracked on one permit instead of having to open two or three permits over a large project to see, did they get their footer inspection here? Did they get their framing inspection in this other permit? So because of that, it's not apples and apples. But we were getting 200 permits a day on average. So 1,000 a week, 4,000 a month. And we would process the same amount. So if you looked at any given month, you'd have around 4,000. Sometimes it would peak up to like 4,300 or 4,400 and you'd have 4,000 processed. Not the same 4,000 necessarily because some older ones would get processed because what we would, you know, kind of going back to your other question is 20% of the permits should go out immediately, come in, go out immediately. The simple permits, and I don't have a, a number for you there, but the simple permits beyond that 20% should be within a week. And then as the complexity grows, it's less about when that permit gets out and more about how quickly we can turn around the reviews. So we should, on a complex permit, some of the biggest permits, we should be able to get through that review, on our side at least, within six weeks. And put the ball back into the architect or the engineer's court for them to then respond to those comments and turn it around. And it, we always, I always struggle with answering the question of how long because some people will put something in and not touch it again for six months. Like they, they needed to get it in to show their bank that they were serious about it. But the bank discussion didn't go well, so now they're looking for financing somewhere else and they're not ready for that permit. So we say, hey, you know, you put, you put down Jason Hessler Incorporated, but we don't see that in the state of Maryland as a corporation. Oh, I should have put it as LLC. That would have been a quick fix. But I don't care about the permit right now because I got to find out my financing. I fired my architect. You know, whatever it may be, something happens and that permit sits. And then you also have situations where people are applying for permits but don't intend to do any work. And I, I saw that today where I was reviewing a property and that property had 11 permits and zero inspections and no activity. And so it's, it's a weird world, the permitting world that is.
It is. No, I, I really appreciate it. Part of my reason I, for asking the question is I, I am, I am worried and anxious and you may have, you may share these anxieties. You may have a data points to share back that because the permit system's been so difficult this year that, that people simply aren't applying. They may not be applying and still doing the work or they may just, they may just be avoiding doing work whatsoever, right? That, that this is a drag on the activity, either driving people just from, away from activity or driving people into illicit and unpermitted activity, right? Which happens all the time in the city anyway, even in better conditions from a permit standpoint. I, I don't know if you all have, have, have any sense of, of what that's, because there's so many different factors that drive the volume of permits that come in, right? So do you have any sense of, of whether we've seen an increase in unpermitted work? Or whether trends in terms of submitted applications are, indicate something is, is up in people's decision making process aside from normal rises and falls?
We're not seeing an uptake in unpermitted work. So I mean, and I sit right outside the office, my office is right, right where the guys that do those inspections every day. So I hear constantly, plus looking at the numbers and everything else. So we're, we're not seeing an uptick there. You know, we're in a, a good spot right now in the city as far as, knock on wood, as far as market conditions go. Like people are investing. They're investing a lot. You know, I think we're going to continue, as, as this trends, we're going to continue to see more permits coming in. And so we need to be prepared for that and we recognize that. But I, I think that we're not losing money necessarily because of this delay. We may be delaying that money coming in. But at the same time, we're, we understand we're, we're hurting our customers and the residents. And we need, we're making those improvements as quickly as we can to adjust for that and, and throw in a lot of resources at it.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you everybody. Mr. Chair, I think the last thing I want to say is really looking forward to seeing the fire department process permit, permit reform process and adding new staff and third parties rolling out. I know that was something we heard a, a ton about in working with, with residents and with businesses in our district and I know around the city. So really glad that we, that that was embedded in the budget process this year. And really excited to see you all take that and run with it and, and be leading the way on, on helping the entire system get, get, get in good shape. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. Councilman Ramos, do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, I do have a few more, but I wanted to give, since my colleague brought it up, the fire department a chance to talk a little bit about the work that they've done and their process improvements and where we are on the, how the website's going, et cetera, et cetera. And then I have two other questions. Go ahead.
Thank you, councilperson. This is Chief Ames in Office of the Fire Marshal. In January, the C A O approached us about rolling out a third party program with a little bit of encouragement from, from the deputy mayor and assistant deputy mayor. We rolled out a program on May the 1st. It's the very first, it's the first part of a very larger program. We successfully processed five permits. Each project was approved within two days. So we've taken the permit processing time from a month down to three days. They basically hired a certified third party plan viewer, which is a fire protection engineer or, or nicely trained technician. They fill out some forms to basically say they went over the plans and it meets, and it meets code. And we basically processed the, the, the permit. We hired a contractual plan viewer in January. We've also hired a fire codes plan manager. He began January, the 16th, and he's, and he's up, up and running. With the diligence of Chief Wallace, we've reclassed three, three, three positions. We'd be hiring three new plan viewers hopefully in the, in the next month or two. Most notably, our productivity has increased drastically. We had some issues with getting our plans reviewed in 30 days. I'm happy to report the fire department is reviewing 90% of its plans within 30 days. We're processing all our using occupancies within 10 days. So as an overall outlook on, on, on the fire department, we, we are really doing, doing good at this point in time.
And there are still a couple of things that you're working on, you said. So there's a couple of staff that you're still working through. And is that, I just want to make sure I heard you properly. You're fully staffed?
So we had, we had three vacancies and three inspection vacancies. Those have been filled. Through the budgetary process, we will be getting three more people. We hired a contractual plan viewer in January. We just hired another plan viewer last week. And that's kind of where we are right, right this minute.
So you've basically been able to utilize the, the slowdown in permits to try to increase your, you know, your flows and figure out what, what needs to be done because that increase is coming back. So you're going to need to be prepared. So it sounds like you're doing that.
Yes. I mean, we, we're in a much better place than we've been in the, in the prior budgets. Again, there's always work to be done. As the, I mean, we, we are facing a little bit, bit of backlog as the backlog is coming and hitting us. But overall, I mean, I think we'll be fine.
Well, knock on wood, I haven't had any fire permit challenges in my inbox recently. So that's an indication, I think. So I, I appreciate that. Thanks for the opportunity to, and Mr. Chair, thanks for letting them give an update on that. I had two other sort of buckets of questions. One is about the, uh, one of the process improvements that was done immediately even before Acela was this call center, which the calls have been, you know, they're answered through 311. We know that our 311 folks are, you know, also amazing. And I guess I just want to get a better sense of, and maybe this is a, a committee request or part of your sort of organizational chart. Like once a call comes in because somebody's got a question, right? We've said that we want to have people call 311 if there's a question, then how does that get? that get, obviously it goes to specific people. You're telling me no. Go ahead.
They're not calling 311. I just, sorry, I started shaking my head because I didn't want that to get out there. They're calling the permits office, but the calls are routed to a group of call takers, some of which happen to be 311 operators.
All right, I totally screwed that up. My mistake. I totally screwed it up. Thank you for clarifying. So I'll repeat so I make sure that I get it right. So it wasn't calling 311. It was calling one number, you got one number, and we happened to have some folks from 311 at that call center, so that's where that came from, so I apologize. So they call that one number, okay. So they call that number and then they go, they're, some of them can answer, right? Because it's a call center that they can answer some basic questions like, what are the hours of the permit office? What are the, those kinds of things? But then when they get to be more complicated, they, do they have a list with them of, here's Plan Reviewer A is working on this permit and can send it over to Plan Reviewer A? Is that how that works? And can we include the call center in the org chart?
Yep, so I can answer that. And just to add some further clarification around how this is organized, so it is a separate unit within 311, so it is managed by the 311, you know, organizational chart, but the call takers are a separate distinct unit within that organization. So to answer your question, right now also, I just want to highlight, we have the ePermits line, which is that main phone number, and again, you call the same numbers as you would.
And for the public consumption, what is that number?
I'm going to defer to DHCD for the phone number off the top of the head. Sorry, trying to hit the right button. The Permits Office line is the 443-984-1809 number. That's the 443-984-1809 number. And then I want to also add into that, that the Plans Review number has also been added to the call center. So if you're trying to get in touch with a DHCD Plans Reviewer, that's the 410-396-3460 number, and that has also been added to the call center line. So when that number picks up, the call center is picking that up. And then we also added the Building and Trade Inspection Line as well. So if you call the 396-3470 number, that also is, not yet.
That is a future for September.
That will be added, but we went ahead and added the Plans Review number. So the two additional lines that are coming on with additional training and hiring is the inspections number will be added.
And that's helpful because we have gotten some complaints of people, you know, they scheduled an inspection, for some reason the inspector wasn't able to be there and no way to communicate at all with the inspector or, you know. So, yeah, we've had a couple of those. And it, so I think I just want to make sure that everybody knows that it's going to be these three numbers or four numbers, and those are the only four numbers that you call and that they're, okay. Because originally that wasn't how we were told the call center was going to go, that it was just going to be one number and then they would be routed. But it sounds like it's a little bit more complex and that's why we're getting to the four.
Right. Well, and I would add, just for sake of ease right now for customers, right? We're not looking to change phone numbers on people either, right? So for now, we're just changing who's answering it on the backend. And just for context, because I know you were asking about referrals and we can provide you, you know, as a follow-up kind of what, how, how anything that is referred, how that's handled. But I do just want to highlight, it's actually a relatively low percentage that does require referrals. So I will say it spiked after obviously the new permitting system, so it's been averaging since then, it's about 13% that needs to be referred. But actually, when you pull the stats for the past couple of weeks in July, we're back down to what it was pre-EXELA, which is about a 6% referral rate.
Yeah, if you could get us as a committee request that sort of flow of where things go and when, and obviously what you're sort of predicting with these others, if there is a flow that, you know, is coming up, that would be super helpful.
Clarification, you're asking for a phone tree?
Sure, if that's the technical term for it.
I just want to make sure, because you're saying flow, I don't want to mix this up with like a, I don't want you to just get a phone tree, but also like a process flow.
Yes.
I just want a flow chart. Just want to make sure we're clear, because somebody may think that the flow is a phone tree versus a process chart. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. And, yeah, and I'm, I'm a chart and a spreadsheet person, so that will be super helpful. Thank you. But it'll also be helpful for us, because as people call us and say, hey, we couldn't get to wherever, we at least know a sense of what's supposed to be happening. So I do appreciate that. And then the last bucket of questioning is around the feedback, the public feedback loop and testing. It's been clear that the system before it rolled out did not get enough testing from the actual permit pullers, right? There's a difference between the permit pullers and the general contractors may not be the permit pullers. And so I'm just getting, trying to get a sense of how much testing was actually done, and then what are we doing moving forward to make sure we're testing for the actual, the user? And there's several users in mind that I have in mind that I'd like to make sure get into that feedback queue, or how's that, how's that working? Do we have any, do we have any reports at all of what the testing revealed that maybe we could take a look at?
The testing results was a request, yes, correct.
I just want to make sure that we get that. But then moving forward, then what is that continual, because I have a list here that I'm going to hand to you, Deputy Mayor, from somebody who sent it to me, like just some other basic things that need to be changed. Like apparently the system is having a problem with suite numbers in terms of, you know, apartments and things like that. So we don't have to answer that question now, but I just want to, the question I'm trying to get to is, what is the continual feedback loop and testing that's being done before any of those improvements get rolled out?
Do I talk about the feedback from like the B D W and N B I A and the Lusa Junkers at the work?
Yeah. We have set up even before the launch, and it's continued past the launch, monthly meetings with the Maryland Builders Industry Association, N B I A, as well as the Small Deal Developers Collective. So my team and I meet with them remotely every month. I think our next meeting is this Thursday. And we let them know where we are, what's going on, and then we get feedback from them on what issues they're seeing, problems they're having, whether it's the system, whether it's staffing, whether it's inspections, you know, everything's open. So it's been very helpful and useful, and I see that continuing through, past this process, even when this is all going smooth. Because they're working not just in Baltimore City, but other jurisdictions, so they can bring news back to us when there's new things that we should be looking at or trying, you know, if there's things that pop up that aren't working, if all of a sudden an inspector is saying, you know, it needs to be blue lights and not red lights, we can, you know, we get that feedback. So it's positive. And occasionally, yeah, the pat on the back is nice to hear. And they've done both, so they've been partners in this and very useful, so that will continue.
But are there permit pullers participating? Like they hire permit puller, I know they're not called permit processors, but you know what I mean?
Yes, like some of the larger permit processors are a part of that group, as well as the, some of the individual contractors pull their own permits. So it's made up of small guys, big guys.
And so some of the things that we've pointed out didn't come up in testing prior to the system? Like the fact that, you know, there should be a lightning round of permits and instead of putting everything in one place?
No, not, not, the things that came up during the testing got corrected. There were some unknowns that came about, you know, they didn't come up in the testing that came about. The other piece is as you change things, you've got to be careful that they don't impact other things because there is a lot of scripting on top that, you know, if this, take this question away, it could impact something in the workflow further down. So it's a constant matter of testing that kind of stuff. But there was a, there was a lot of testing that went into the product, but it was limited by the scenarios that you put into the system. So as like kind of crazy off-the-wall things come up or just the flow of data that's coming in impacted at all.
So when, how long did you give them the system to play with before we launched it?
We were testing in the system for months. I don't have the exact dates here, but we'll answer that request.
Yeah, okay. I guess it's just a, you know, we want to make sure that there's that constant feedback loop. The other question related to that is about homeowners. You know, we had our constituent here who, you know, had to file the permit. I actually think that the contractor should be filing the permit, and you and I have talked about that. That person should not have had the homeowner do that, and so we need to improve that as well. But when it is, you know, I also have a constituent who needed to get a fence, and we, you know, ended up having to do it themselves. So we need to also hear from our residents that, you know, are, and I'm sure, I don't want to speak for you, but I would imagine that you'd be okay with getting a sense of what that system looked like, you know, is, to be able to get a sense of how to improve that. But I also don't, I mean, there's, so there's that part as well in terms of residents, but I also think that they're not going to, the vocabulary is different, the contractor should be doing that.
Yep. We, we've been using, we've had a trainer that really is with B C I T that has been helping with this project, but with the most recent budget, we did get a new position that is currently posted, closes I think next week, for a training officer specific to the Permits and Inspections Division. And the way that I see that position is kind of really threefold. One would be for updating and training on the software and other software that we have as changes come about or issues come up internally, as well as then training the public, or in that, keeping everybody up to speed on any legislative changes that occur. And then the third piece, which really came out of discussions you and I had, is more around like public information, not just for the permitting system, but just across the board, inspections and safety, you know, and obviously the Keswick fires were one of those big ones where looking to do something where 30-second, one-minute video of like, poke your head up in the attic and see if you can see into your neighbor's house. If so, you should follow these directions to get a permit and hire a contractor and put up a firewall, and maybe we can prevent a disaster like that. So that, hopefully we'll get some good applicants and be able to hire somebody in the next couple of weeks and bring them on shortly that'll help focus and, you know, on that stuff and expand on it.
Can I add one more thing? I mean, one reason, I agree, probably ideal to have contractors do the permits, but from getting feedback from the architect community, they've said we want it, they want it to be clear to the layperson because they get pushed back from the homeowner saying, I want a permit for that. And so having a clear example on the website to say, here's what you need a permit for, here's what you don't, here's the process for that permit, here's how long it generally takes, so they can estimate, and having the clarity and transparency to show where it is in the process so that the homeowner, when the architect maybe misrepresents to the council, to the people, hey, it's actually, it's in already, and it's actually, it's not in, or the ball's in the architect's court and they sat on it, want to have all the information clear so we can all get fewer calls and be transparent and have more predictability.
Yeah, I appreciate Deputy Hessler about what you talked about before because a lot of what I think, what I know, I asked for in this new system, which is not there yet, is clear expectations. I mean, the fire department has it on their website, but clear expectations, you need a permit for X, and this is how you do it. You need a permit for Y, and this is how you do it. Do you need a permit to paint your house, only if you're in a chap district, you know, like, or U R P? And so having those clear expectations is going to be helpful. I think the video that you proposed was a good one as well. That's going to be really critical, I think, to set those expectations as well, and to say, like, no, your contractor's supposed to do this, and here's what you should expect from your contractor. So I think that that's going to be important. So three things, aside from making sure that everything gets fixed, I want to make sure that we continue to talk about this issue of, I am seeing houses getting rehab without permits through the Codex data and through other ways, because I'm getting calls. I think we had a situation like that today. And so what I had proposed would be a fix for that, is to make sure that it doesn't happen, which is if somebody applies for permits, a lot of times these guys are applying for permit, and it might be electrical, but they're to end up doing a full rehab. So it looks like they have permits, but they actually don't for the full rehab, and then they just don't even go through the next set of things, is that we, there has to be a tickle to the inspectors that they need to go check the permits and not just wait for the developer or the rehabber to say, hey, I'm ready. Like, I know that it takes a lot of capacity, I'm willing to go fight for your capacity to do that, but like, that has to happen, you don't have to answer that right now. And then at some point in time, my colleagues know that I've been working on this and so does DHCD, we are going to go into a deconstruction model, and we need to integrate that into the permit system. And so we can talk about that later in terms of what that, what that would actually, would actually look like. But hopefully we can get all of this together relatively soon, because as my colleagues have said and all of us have said, this is pretty critical. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a follow-up, because in the hearing packet, there's an invoice for, how much was it, Tony? $180,000 for a punch list and remediation list. Can I have a copy of that for the committee? That was invoiced on 2/27. So I would like to see the artifacts related to that invoice to prove why we made that payment to them on 2/27, $480,000, which means that that will then be related to your testing because then you know what to remediate.
Well, we'll follow up, Mr. Chair.
And I just want to make it very clear that like, that cannot, that's actually not covered on the N B I A for an exception, just to be transparent, because that is related to a financial discussion. So I would like to also see the notes from the actual feedback for the actual, I would like to see the consultant's notes related to the remediation list as well. Thank you. And I'm going to move over to Councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is late into the evening, but I do want to thank everyone for hanging in there and the folks watching on Charm TV as well. And I want to just preface this by saying, a lot of people are working extremely hard on this system. A lot of people are trying to help to fix it. But I'm pretty frustrated with what we heard tonight. There seems to be no clarity on when the backlog will be cleared, no date for a long-term fix, no czar has been appointed, and there appears to be muddle on who is in charge. I heard Deputy Administrator Kearney is the head of the Tiger Team. I also heard Deputy Mayor Williams is sort of interim something, but I'm still not clear on like who is actually in charge here. Councilman Torrance asked some really good questions about data and a data cleanse and really hear a clear response on that. I think to Councilman Jones's point, just the lack of a clear date by which we're going to see real improvement or any sort of commitment is deeply unsatisfying. I would say that, and I want to talk to the chair about this afterward, but within the next eight to 10 weeks, I would like to see the backlog cut in half. I would like to see us hire the permit czar, whoever that may be, but that there is someone who is permanently, or at least for now, permanently in charge of but that there is someone who is permanently, or at least for now, permanently in charge of permits for the city of Baltimore so that when Councilmember Ramos has folks emailing her about a broken permit system, she has one person instead of eight that she needs to direct it to. And, and, and I'd like to see some real action, like the chairman mentioned, on data. And, and, you know, I've heard a lot about how data integration was a real challenge. That, that was truly a wild story, although not the first time I've heard it unfortunately in city government about only one person having the source code and that person not working for us anymore. And so the possibility that it could all come crashing down. Those are some of the things that I'd like to see. I know there's a commitment around a plan within four weeks for what the permit office would look like. And looking forward to that. But again, I, I really appreciate just the questions that my colleagues asked tonight, the testimony that many of our neighbors provided this evening. It is just mission critical to get this right. It impedes economic growth. It causes, it undermines the good work that the mayor and governor and all of us are trying to do on vacancy. And, and it just undermines people's confidence in local government. And we know that when we put our back against an issue, even intractable issues, even, even issues as complicated and hard as murder, that we as a city can make real progress. And so I, I just, I want to see that same focus and determination. Again, I don't want to in any way underplay the amount of effort that I think folks are putting in right now. I know folks have been deeply, deeply engaged and huddled up on this, but when there's like no commitments around dates or expectations of when things are going to get fixed, it, it is highly unsatisfying. And so, uh, again, I, I'm hoping that we can reconvene in the next eight to 12 weeks that there is some real progress made on these issues. And again, backlog cut in half, hire a permit czar, address the data, cleanse issues that the chair lifted up. And, and just make clear that someone is truly accountable and in control. And that there is, if there is going to be an office stood up, that we at least have the bones of that office and can understand what is going to do. That's what I got. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just want to close by saying, what you asked was who's in charge? And what I said was that you heard as a part of the city administrators budget hearing that the Tiger Team was going to be in charge of this process and I am leading that effort, so I am in charge. Um, I would also like to state that in a response to Councilmember Jones asking about timelines, what we said was that we would have measurable progress by the fall. If you look at the chart that is included in the PowerPoint that we shared with you all, you're already starting to see that we are making great strides. And as soon as applications come in, we are pushing them out. We are continuing to double down on that effort. You've seen, you've heard a lot today about the number of hours people are putting in, the number of people that are committed to the process. You've heard us talk about staffing and things of that nature. And so we are keenly aware that where we are right now is not acceptable and that we are doing everything that we can to improve those processes and those procedures and also making sure that we are limiting the amount of frustration that we have to our residents. We understand and we get that. And so what you have heard from us today is a commitment to do that. You talked about the murder rate. It took decades to get the murder rate under, under, well, I shouldn't say under control, but to decrease. We're not going to take decades, but it is going to take a little bit of time. And so we had a rollout that was not as envisioned. We have talked exhaustively about that tonight. Uh, and what you hear from us is a commitment to get it right. And so we will continue to do the staffing. We will continue to make efforts in, in all of the things that we talked about as a part of Be More Fast. We are making those efforts. And so a commitment to resolve the backlog in half. We have, you heard DHCD talk about the number of permits that come in every single day. And so we are doing again our best to make sure that we are stabilizing the system, but also that we are, we are processing permits as quickly as we can. And so with the dedicated effort of the Tiger Team, as well as some of our stakeholders who are assisting us, we're going to get it right. And so just want to end with that. Thank you.
And look, I, I very much appreciate Deputy Administrator that you are in charge, you making that clear. My challenge with a Tiger Team is that, my assumption is that eventually it goes away. And so you will not be the permanent permit czar or the permanent person who oversees the office. Is that a fair assumption?
That is a fair, that is a fair statement. But again, the Tiger Team will exist for as long as it takes for us to right the ship. And so I am in charge as we stand up of the, as we envision what our new centralized process will look like. As we think about who is correct for the position of permit czar, we don't just want to hire anyone because we have a timeline that's been shared with us publicly about when you think that we should have someone on board. What we want is someone qualified. What we want is someone who understands our processes and our procedures. What we want is someone who is just as dedicated to righting the ship as we are. So we're going to do all of those things. But again, for right now, it is me. Once we hire a permit czar, that will then transition to that individual. But it is me for the moment. So the answer to your question is it will be the permit czar, who we have not yet hired, but I am here in this position to make sure that we are correcting the challenges that we have with the permitting system as it stands right now.
So since you are in charge, can I, can we get a commitment on when, or a timeline on when the permit czar will be brought on?
So what we need to do first is post the position. And what I would say is this is July. I think that we could probably get the position posted because I know that we already have a position description that we have been vetting internally. I think that reasonably in the next few months that we would start to engage in an interview process. But again, our, our focus is on making sure that we have the right person in the position. So I would say in the next several months, we should be able to talk about onboarding someone new. I'm not going to give a date. If you're asking me for December 31st, 2025, that's not what you're going to get from me. What I'm committing to is at least in the next couple of months, making sure that we have someone in the position.
I appreciate that. I would say, you know, when we rolled out Be More Fast, it seemed like this was top priority. This was urgent and this is the thing that was sort of elevated to the top of the list. And so here we are several months later and we're saying it's going to be several more months later and then, then we need to interview. Again, I, I find this unsatisfying. This is not to knock the hard work that I know you all are doing in this space, but I, I think what this council is looking for is some dates certain by which things are going to happen, this office, this czar, this, that, you know, anything on, if eight weeks is not a fair timeline, what is a fair timeline for cutting the backlog in half?
I answered that already.
So let me meet y'all in the middle.
I mean.
I enjoy your monthly reports from ARCA. I would like to see if we can generate some type of monthly report that gives us a status of like some high level things, that gives us some real data. I think that is a happy medium as well in between oversight hearings. I think I'm just trying to cut, cut the baby dead in the middle, right? I think a report, a monthly report that provides a status update is reasonable. I don't know if you may consider that reasonable, but I think that you have done a great job with communicating through the recovery office, a lot of information in 20 pages to allow us on the status where things are. And I enjoy reading it, right? It's very clear. I think that if we can have something similar to that in terms of where we are agency wise for each one of the agencies in like the permit types, that gives us, that gives us something to see that there's progress, but it also gives the opportunity for the public and others to say that there is progress being made, right? I think it should live somewhere that says, hey, this is where we are. These are the goals that we have for the fall. This is the progress we've made thus far. I like a storytelling. I think that is a perfect way to tell the story of like, this is where we were, this is where we are now, this is the goal to get there and this is where we're on track to.
I'm, I'm happy to, to work with my colleagues on, on a report that provides updates on where we are. I also know that there is the outstanding request about the dashboard, which we're also working on to make sure that we have clear and accurate data to share as well. So between those two things, I should get you the progress that you're requesting as part, as, uh, what we're doing as a part of this effort.
I'll even accept some pivoted tables and charts if you have them for me, okay? I'm fine with even if you got locked cells. I just want to see something to allow me to know where you guys are. I will not underscore that the fact that like this is a difficult thing. I'm a systems person and Lord knows the city government needs to get to improvement science in terms of like improving systems because we always have chokeholds in a lot of our systems. I think one day we will get there, but I think this is an opportunity for us even as we're going through this to do a case study on how we got here, how we fix it, how we prevent it in the future from happening. I will observe Councilman at courtesy as one of my colleagues told me that someone wanted to provide public comment. And I wholeheartedly believe in providing people opportunities. So I think we have Victor from Rebirth Baltimore here. We will allow him to have three minutes of public testimony and then we'll end for the evening. Do you want to testify, Victor?
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Council President, Chair, Council members, members of the mayor's office and others. First, I apologize to everyone for elongating the evening. It's late into the night, so I'll actually cut my comments to one minute instead of three. First, I have a book, Recoding America. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And I'll actually read just a couple of pages out of the introduction. So the first thing is to public servants everywhere, don't give up, right? So it talks to, this book speaks to the challenges of upgrading systems and the issues that we see across America, both at the federal and the state level, right? So it happens. When we talk about code missing, I worked for a large software developer. It's happened at places you couldn't believe where there was one person that had access to code and they left. But that actually speaks to the example of the value of an employee. So from the Baltimore city perspective, you've got folks that are developing code, working on top of MRIS, and they're getting solicited by large software developers, right? So that's a particular challenge that may need to be addressed. Second page, the ultimate hidden truth of the world is that it is something that we make and we could just as easily make differently. We shape the world as we see it, right? So I do think from the permit perspective, we actually have opportunity here. For me, I actually get my permits in one day. So we run a large rehab organization, somewhat large. And when we submit in the morning, we typically actually have our permits by that afternoon or the following morning, but we understand the process. We've gone into the office and we've interviewed folks. And we've actually taken lessons learned and integrated it into our internal system. So Deputy Commissioner Hessler mentioned that he's a member of the MBIA. He's presented. We actually meet monthly. We take our lessons learned and we integrate them in. So the point that I'm making here is the system actually can produce quickly, right? If you position yourself properly. There are lessons that need to be taught. There's training or what have you. I was disheartened to hear about the homeowner, I don't know who's here, that said that she had a roof that needed to be worked on. We do that in one or two business days, right? So, you know, again, it's not necessarily that the system itself is failing, although there are absolutely things that need to be improved. It is also training, adoption, education, things that, you know, kind of need to be taken in. So with that, I'll keep comments short and turn it back over.
Praise God. With that being said, at this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and we'll recess until another three months. I'll see you guys soon.